Welcome to our latest installment of OUSD N1. The Orange Unified School District is proud to honor the Orange Chamber of Commerce with the Community Partner Recognition Award for its outstanding contributions to our students and school community. As part of the OUSD Edge Strategic Plan, the district is committed to building strong partnerships that enhance student learning. The Orange Chamber of Commerce has been a dedicated partner, working closely with our district to provide valuable educational and career-focused opportunities for post-high school success. Our thanks to the Orange Chamber of Commerce for being our community partners in education. Check out all of our awardees on our website.
Together, we are OUSD. We are not only educators, administrators, and support staff, we are champions for our students. Through our dedication to excellence and innovative programs, each day presents an opportunity to make a difference in the hearts and minds of our young scholars who walk through our doors. We are OUSD, a collective force committed to enriching the lives of our students and leaving a lasting positive impact on their journey. Together, we empower our students to chase their dreams, overcome challenges, and embrace learning with joy and enthusiasm. In our classrooms, hallways, and offices, we are OUSD. Our students continue to thrive, achieving remarkable milestones in their academic and personal journeys. Each success story ignites a spark of inspiration, encouraging us to continue fostering an environment where every student can reach their full potential. Let us continue to strive for excellence, lead by example, and inspire those around us to be the best version of themselves. Together, we celebrate the greatness within OUSD, and we look forward to even more outstanding achievements and success in the days to come.
Here in early learning at Orange Unified, we are proud to provide our youngest learners a strong foundation. That's why I love our preschool program. It gives our students that love for learning and allows them to start developing their social-emotional skills.
They're interacting with other kids. They're not at home, where it's like some of them don't have siblings. So they come to school to learn how to share and learn how to parent themselves.
It's more about socially and emotionally, how to make friends, how to solve problems, critical thinking.
As you can see, the classroom is set up with what they can explore and they can learn and discover.
Our preschools are centered on play-based learning, so it's not like heavily structured in, you know, assignments and worksheets, which is what they're gonna get, you know, later on in life. And so we like to really foster our program into having fun with our children.
Our children spend so much of their childhood in school. It's so important for them to have built that foundation to prepare them for their long educational career that's coming. And that all starts here with preschool.
I think it's the best idea to get them introduced right away because it gives your child an opportunity to grow with everyone their own age.
It's nice for them to learn how to make those connections with other kids and starting to learn how to talk to other kids and approach them and say, "Do you want to play with me?" and learn that sometimes they want to play, sometimes they don't.
As a parent and as a teacher, I love to see my child want to go to school and be happy and want to play with their friends. And to be able to give that gift to students at such a young age, you're not losing anything, but you're gaining so much more.
We are here to help you navigate the enrollment process and answer any questions you may have. Call us today to get your child started on their educational journey.
Welcome to our latest installment of OUSD N1. The Orange Unified School District is proud to honor the Orange Chamber of Commerce with the Community Partner Recognition Award for its outstanding contributions to our students and school community. As part of the OUSD Edge Strategic Plan, the district is committed to building strong partnerships that enhance student learning. The Orange Chamber of Commerce has been a dedicated partner, working closely with our district to provide valuable educational and career-focused opportunities for post-high school success. Our thanks to the Orange Chamber of Commerce for being our community partners in education. Check out all of our awardees on our website.
Together, we are OUSD. We are not only educators, administrators, and support staff, we are champions for our students. Through our dedication to excellence and innovative programs, each day presents an opportunity to make a difference in the hearts and minds of our young scholars who walk through our doors. We are OUSD, a collective force committed to enriching the lives of our students and leaving a lasting positive impact on their journey. Together, we empower our students to chase their dreams, overcome challenges, and embrace learning with joy and enthusiasm. In our classrooms, hallways, and offices, we are OUSD. Our students continue to thrive, achieving remarkable milestones in their academic and personal journeys. Each success story ignites a spark of inspiration, encouraging us to continue fostering an environment where every student can reach their full potential. Let us continue to strive for excellence, lead by example, and inspire those around us to be the best version of themselves. Together, we celebrate the greatness within OUSD, and we look forward to even more outstanding achievements and success in the days to come.
Here in early learning at Orange Unified, we are proud to provide our youngest learners a strong foundation. That's why I love our preschool program. It gives our students that love for learning and allows them to start developing their social-emotional skills.
They're interacting with other kids. They're not at home where it's like some of them don't have siblings, so they come to school to learn how to share and learn how to parent self. It's more about socially and emotionally, how to make friends, how to solve problems, critical thinking. As you can see, the classroom is set up where they can explore and they can learn and discover.
Our preschools are centered on play-based learning, so it's not like heavily structured in, you know, assignments and worksheets, which is what they're gonna get, you know, later on in life. And so, we like to really foster our program into having fun with our children.
Our children spend so much of their childhood in school. It's so important for them to have built that foundation to prepare them for their long educational career that's coming, and that all starts here with preschool.
I think it's the best idea to get them introduced right away because it gives your child an opportunity to grow with everyone their own age.
It's nice for them to learn how to make those connections with other kids and starting to learn how to talk to other kids and approach them and say, "Do you want to play with me?" and learn that sometimes they want to play, sometimes they don't.
As a parent and as a teacher, I love to see my child want to go to school and be happy and want to play with their friends. And to be able to give that gift to students at such a young age, you're not losing anything, but you're gaining so much more.
We are here to help you navigate the enrollment process and answer any questions you may have. Call us today to get your child started on their educational journey.
Okay, I call the regular session of this April 16th board meeting to order at 7:06 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. Mr. Superintendent, do we have a report of closed session items?
Yes, we do. Thank you. The readout from closed session is that in accordance with Government Code Section 54956.9D2, anticipated litigation, the board took action to reject Claim Number 644463. That concludes the report of closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3D, adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Trustee Thomas, do you have a second? Trustee Glass, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll say aye also.
7-0, motion carries. All right, we are going to start with our school spotlight. And Richland, hit it.
Hello there. Okay. Hello, everyone, members of the school board, faculty, fellows, students, and parents. My name is Yanni San Juan, and I am honored to stand before you today as a proud student of Richland High School. A place that is more than just a school. It's a thriving community filled with opportunities, creativity, and heart. Today, I want to take a moment to shine a light on some of the activities that make Richland High School a positive and caring environment. Our school often faces challenges and misconceptions, but I can assure you that Richland is passionate, supportive, and dedicated to making a difference in students' life. Firstly, let's talk about our field trips. This year, the counseling team has made great strides. Towards exposing us to colleges, we've had the opportunity to see colleges like Santiago Canyon College, Santa Ana College, and Fullerton College. Aside from colleges tours, our CTE pathway has been taking field trips. The business pathway directed by Ms. Damon went to the Port of L.A. and the art media of Interment Pathways directed by Mr. Kitchen went to the Laguna Art Museum and got the chance to take photos at the beach. Also during the quarter two, we had a college and career fair with representatives from various schools and career pathways. Switching gears to the sports, the sport intervention program brings a positive energy and spirit to our school. Students had the opportunity to play soccer for the Richland team, which included home and away games. Shout out to Sharon, who was a key player on the team. Additionally, this quarter, the Richland-Hamble team makes its comeback under the direction of Coach Maritza. We're excited to see Richland pride on the court, and we expect to see some good results from the team. Our school has been buzzing with creativity through our RHTV news program under the direction of Mr. Kitchen. This year, we have created eight episodes featuring games, shows, interviews, and site surveys, and even dances. RHTV is operated by the events video production CTE class. It's a platform for students to express themselves and share good news with school community. The video you'll see in a moment was created by the RHTV team and displays videos projects from the past year. Continuing on with sharing our school's pride and accomplishments, we have our associate student body ASB as another important piece of our school spirit under the direction of Mr. Stone. They organize events to bring students together, creating lasting memories. ASB has introduced exciting activities for seniors at Richland, including the chance to go on a trip to Disneyland. They also select a staff member of the month, honoring them with gifts, recognitions for their hard work and dedication. This recognition fosters a culture and gratitude and respect. We are also excited about the return of Richland Prom next month. Richland is dedicated to engaging our campus, and one recent improvement is the addition of our new shade structure on the blacktop. This upgrade offers students more comfortable space to relax and connect with one another. It also provides a great new venue for hosting graduation ceremonies. So far this school year, 47 students have graduated, and we anticipate celebrating other 50 more graduates by the end of the quarter. In addition to all the wonderful activities happening at Richland High School, our staff, counselors, and teachers also prioritize the well-being of our students through comprehensive counseling service with Counselors Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Bañuelos. This week, we are grateful for our counselor's presentation titled, "The Signs of Suicide", which helped create awareness and provide support for those in need. Thank you to Ms. Katie Tree for supporting the approval of this curriculum for our students. Also, our transition support group for multilingual learners has been effective in ensuring the students can work towards one-time graduation. The program wrapped up in the third quarter and made great progress. The student success, we've also seen 13% increase in financial aid application for the 2024 and 2025 school year, which demonstrates our growing commitment to helping students reach higher education. The addition for a second counselor ensures that our students receive the graduation support they need. To sum it up, Richland High School is a place of growth and invited, sorry, community. We are dedicated to turning our challenges into victories, showcasing our achievements, and building a positive future. Now, I'd like to invite you to watch a short video that captures what Richland is all about. Thank you.
What were your expectations first coming to Richland versus now?
First coming to Richland, I didn't know what to expect aside from working with some amazing students. And that's exactly what I found. I found that students here are great. It's such a small, close-knit community, kind of like a family. And I feel like that's kind of the biggest thing that kind of came out of like, okay, this is home.
But after coming here, seeing how it's actually like and experiencing the community firsthand, it's nothing like the stories, and it's a pretty good place, honestly.
Not just the teachers, but the students are really like very nice. I really like them. And yeah, I really appreciate this school, and I really like it.
Here I am, I came to Richland, and the first day of school, my whole stereotype of what a Richland student was busted. I know you're capable. I know you deserve an education. I always appreciate it when those students overcome those obstacles and they succeed, and they graduate and return back to their home school.
Well, I think that Richland is a rich land, I think. It's rich with the educators here, the teachers here, I think, are fantastic. And they really care about the students and not only about like their success, but they listen to the students, I think. Out of all the experience I've had in education, the students here see things through a different perspective. Maybe it's because the experiences that they've had, you know, a lot of them are beyond their years in wisdom already. And that adds to the educational experience in so many different ways, I think. I wouldn't, I wouldn't change my place where I am, you know, for anything. I think it's one of the best schools I've ever been to, and it's a gem in this district. It should never, ever be overlooked because I think- It should never, ever be overlooked, because I think it has a lot to add for this community.
It's a space for everyone to start all over, you know, shows just kids that if one door closes, there's always another window or another door. Everyone either wants to stay or come back due to the faculty and how they feel connected and seen here.
Richland provides that opportunity for them to kind of reassess and change basically the way they approach education, academics. While it is noted as a smaller school, that doesn't mean a weaker school, or a school that is less than because it happens to be smaller. There is a lot of talented people here.
Honestly, my experience here, how the teachers treat you, how the students are, like, it's been better.
Yeah? Good campus?
Yes, good campus, good people, yes.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, and I'm just gonna take a minute to invite up so many of our staff and students up here, so you can kind of put some faces to the names. You guys, come on up, come on up. So I just quickly, so this is Sharon Salazar and Jesús Ojeda, they are ASB Leadership Students, outstanding students, just really helping us out. I got, we'll go on this end. So Mr. Kitchen, as you saw, our video and photography teacher. Obviously, y'all know Ms. Yanni San Juan, our student board member and leadership student, so heavily involved. Ms. Yolanda Fernandez, she's our community liaison. Ms. Jackie Gomez, she does everything on campus, tenants clerk, and just supports in all areas. We have our two counselors here, Ms. Bianca Rodriguez and Ms. Maggie Bañuelos. So huge support for our students, as you saw in the videos. And then we'll go here with Ms. Maritza, our security, our handball coach, and also all things involved with supporting our students. So this is just a small piece of our campus. As you can see in the video, just so much heart, so much community, and so much love that goes into what we do at Richland. So thank you so much for the opportunity showcasing who we are and what we bring to our district.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. San Juan. We're gonna do a photo.
Photo, 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 come on.
How do you need us?
That way. That's fine. You might have to squeeze down, because Frank hit the board in, too. Ready, one, two, three. Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you, I love what one of the gentlemen said about Richland being rich land, and I was going to say it is rich in experience, it's rich in heart, and as you said, it's rich in love. I mean, every time you step on the campus, you know that there's a lot of care that the students have for one another and that the staff have for students. So thank you, and you did a wonderful job. Thank you. Alright, next, we have a Board acknowledgment of Lorenzo Ramirez's successful challenge to school segregation and commitment to keep his legacy alive. So tonight, we have the honor of acknowledging and welcoming the Lorenzo Ramirez family. For those that are able, would you like to come up and stand up at the podium? Thank you. We, Councilwoman, Orange City Councilwoman Anna Gutierrez and I jointly brought this item forward, and while we typically commemorate the case Mendez et al. versus Westminster et al. in March, and specifically Lorenzo Ramirez's pivotal role in this in El Medina, scheduling challenges delayed that. And so it was just really important that we were able to get you all here and to hear from the wonderful speakers that we anticipate hearing from today. So this recognition tonight, it stems from conversations with really passionate community members, family members, city council members, who highlighted to us some significant events that occurred in 2011. And, you know, over time, memories fade, history can fade, and many of us, none of us, were actually on the Board in 2011. We have lots of new staff, lots of new people, and there's always a risk that a story may fade or be diminished, and we, as a Board, are committed to making sure that this important legacy lives on. Rarely does a community witness something so historically significant as that which Lorenzo Ramirez did. So normally, one of us would come down and read the acknowledgment, but because the whole Board thinks this is really important, we're each gonna read part of the acknowledgment to you, and I'm gonna start with trustee to my right, Matt Thomas.
Thank you. El Medina resident Lorenzo Ramirez was a trailblazer whose courage and commitment to justice challenged the segregated practices that denied Mexican-American students an equal opportunity in education in the El Medina School District. After spending his youth in El Medina and graduating from Lincoln Grammar School in 1927, he left to work in Whittier.
When he and his wife returned to El Medina to raise their children, they encountered an unjust system where he sought to enroll his children in the school he once attended. Mexican-American children were now subjected to discrimination and forced to attend a separate and under-resourced school solely on the basis of their ethnicity. Rather than acquiesce, Lorenzo Ramirez joined with other determined families in the landmark 1946 case Mendez et al. versus Westminster et al., setting into motion legal and social changes that directly led to the integration of not only our local schools, but all of California's public schools, and paved the way for future civil rights advancements across the nation.
On March 10th, 2011, the Orange Unified School District Board of Education issued a proclamation honoring the legacy of Lorenzo Ramirez for his successful efforts to end segregation of the El Medina school system during the 1940s. The proclamation honored Lorenzo Ramirez, his wife Josefa, and their children.
On May 12th, 2011, the Orange Unified Board of Education named the El Medina School Library Media Center for Lorenzo Ramirez. The Board additionally recommended that on March 2nd, which is the anniversary date of the first filing of the case on March 2nd, 1945, all Orange Unified Schools honor Lorenzo Ramirez and recommended that district curriculum staff identify appropriate resource materials to be used in honoring the accomplishments of Lorenzo Ramirez. District curriculum staff subsequently created a curriculum regarding Lorenzo Ramirez's legacy to be taught in grades 5, 8, and 11, which is required teaching.
The story of Lorenzo Ramirez, along with his wife and family, not only is a chapter of communities' local history, but also foundational part of the broader American civil rights movement. His testimony and courage in the Mendez et al. versus Westminster case helped challenge the legality of school segregation and laid the foundation for future decisions such as Brown v. Board of Education. For too long, the contributions of Latino families like the Ramirez's has not received the recognition that it deserves in our public institutions. By acknowledging this legacy, we commit ourselves not only to remembering the past, but also to taking meaningful action. This includes ensuring equity, uplifting student voices, and continuing to ongoing work of justice within our schools and our communities.
Through his strength, persistence, and conviction, Lorenzo Ramirez demonstrated the fight for equality is both a personal and a collective responsibility. The Orange Unified School District Board of Education is committed to ensuring Lorenzo Ramirez's legacy and fight for equal rights lives on, and that efforts are made to ensure permanent recognition, including bringing forth forward future initiatives to meet that goal. That is our acknowledgment of you. We would love to be able to present you with this, and if you don't mind, if we could all come down and take a picture with you, we would appreciate that. And you will have speakers that are going to be speaking as well, so actually, why don't we get to the speakers first, and then we'll do, we'll do the certificate and a picture. Let's see, who would we like to start with? Would we like to start with Janice Perez? Okay.
Hello. I'm Janice Perez Carroll. My father was Ralph Perez. We lived the street above Lorenzo Street in El Medina. In 1945, my mother enrolled me at Lincoln High, at Lincoln School, and two weeks later, I was given a notice that I could no longer attend that school due to my Perez Spanish surname. Hence, my father had just come home from World War II, and when my mother heard of this, she was completely angry, and she would not have that. So she made an appointment to go to that school, and I can remember when we were driving to the school, and she was gonna meet with Mr. Hammerstein, who was the superintendent and also the principal of that school. I saw my mother, when we parked in the parking lot, I saw my mother adjust her little beret cap and look in the mirror, and she had a cute little brown suit on, and she had kid gloves on, which were very tight, and I saw her doing this. And I asked her, "Mom," I said, "why are you doing that?" And she says, "Because I'm gonna strangle that Mr. Hammerstein when I see him." And you don't mention something like that to a little four-and-a-half-year-old girl. But up we went, up the steps, and into his office, and my mother, when we were sitting in his office, and he hadn't yet arrived, my mother picked me up and sat me on his, on top of his desk. And then she spread out my little frock, and she sat there and waited for him on the seat next to the desk. And all I could do was imagine my mother strangling Mr. Hammerstein, and I was wondering how a petite, five-foot-two little woman, who barely weighed 100 pounds, was going to strangle this man who I knew was like six-foot-four or bigger, and had to weigh well over 200 pounds. So that's all I could imagine, was my mother strangling him. He entered the room, and my mother acknowledged the fact that, you know, she had the letter from him that said, "I could not attend the school because I only spoke Spanish." So he voices that to her, and she says, he said, "Well, she only speaks Spanish on school grounds, and she only speaks Spanish in class, so she should not attend this school." And my mother says, "Well, that's very strange, because she doesn't know a word of Spanish. Our household only spoke English." So since I didn't know a word of Spanish, my mother said, "Go ahead, Janice, say something." And I looked at him, and then I looked at the space next to me, and I scooted over so my mother would have room to pounce on him and strangle him. And that's all I could think about, so I'm moving over, and I did not utter a single word. Nothing came out of my mouth. And she said, "Say something, speak," and I said, "Nothing." All I could do was look at them, and my little mother and this great big man were arguing back and forth, and as they were bickering, I had no idea what they were talking about, but all I knew is that she picked me up off his desk, and we're marching out his office, and down the steps, and my mother stopped in the middle of the steps, and she tied my shoelace, and then she said, "Janice," she said, "why didn't you say something? I can never shut you up at home, and now that I wanted you to speak, you didn't utter a word." So, you know, off we went home. When my dad came home from work, my mother told my father the events of what had happened. Now, he had only been home from the war two years, I mean, two weeks, so the last thing he wanted to do was go through another battle. Hence, that started the school case. They were in disagreement with Hammerstein, they fought, the battle went on for years. All I know is that people would come to our house every day in the evening with David Marcus, their attorney, and they would pull up their chairs in our living room, and they would proceed with what they were gonna do and how they were gonna start an organization called LULAC to support their case, and they were gonna contact LULAC in Texas for the rules, all the rules that they needed and guidelines, and it just prospered from there. I was home, I was so eager to start school in kindergarten, because everyone I knew was going to that school, and I could hardly wait to start, and when they asked me to leave after two weeks, I was so disappointed. Well, I stayed home from school for two years, and my parents moved us out of that school district and moved us to Santa Ana. I attended Franklin School in Santa Ana, and, which was not segregated, it was integrated. So I finally got the parent, the education my parents wanted for me. When I graduated from UCI, I went to the University of Mexico, UNAM, and just loved it there, they just, just, had a wonderful time there. And then I went back to UCI, and then I went to the University in Japan, in Mitaka, Tokyo, and studied there, and learned the language, and learned to read and write there, and then I came back home and finally started my career. My father was quite proud of the fact that this was the little girl that couldn't attend school, and he was so glad to see me finally go off and come back. I am so grateful for people like Anna Gutierrez, who has put up the good battle and fighting for recognition for Mr. Lorenzo Ramirez and his family. I know what his family's going through, I know the struggle that my parents went through. My dad fought this case all his life. I mean, he was with LULAC, he was with, fighting the school case ever since I can remember, until he could no longer walk. He used to go to Santa Ana College and speak on the case. When I think of the things that are going on with our present administration in government, and I see how they no longer are, they're trying to end the diversification programs that they presently have across the United States, Mr. Glass so mentioned it when he was talking to you about these, how the communities are affected and everyone's affected. When I see what's happening with Columbia University, and they're having to bend to the will of our present administration, when I see how Harvard is fighting against this to try to keep the diversification program so your children can go to school there, Hispanic children can get the education that they so desire, they should have that right. When I see what's happening in Princeton, I see this happening over and over and over again. It's like history is just repeating itself, and if It's like history is just repeating itself, and if you have any appreciation for everything that these people have gone through and allowing these diversification programs to remain, and you want the family, the Ramirez family to be remembered, they need more than recognition in the library. You should be, they should be asking for a school named after him. I mean, my God, look what this family went through. I know because I saw what my parents went through. And I just want to thank the board for listening to me and hearing my story. I heard one of the girls in the back, one of the young ladies, mentioned that she didn't hear about the program and the Ramirez family, and so she was in the fifth grade, I think she said. If there were a school named after him, you cannot erase the diversification that exists in California and others across the nation. We, there's no way that Hispanic people are going to disappear, they're going to be here forever, and you got to know what they've done. And Mr. Ramirez is a good, and his family is a good example of what they have accomplished. Thank you for hearing me, I really appreciate you listening, and I thank Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Gutierrez, Anna Gutierrez, for all she's done and all her passion and her fight and her drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Leila Gureheda?
Good evening, board members. My name is Leila Gureheda, and I am the niece of Lorenzo Ramirez. I attend Almedina High School where the library is currently dedicated to him. Lorenzo Ramirez created a legacy that has lasted generations and many more to come. I believe that he should be recognized for what he did for the community because little did he know, he was paving the way for not just his family and neighbors, but for children with different backgrounds. Learning someone of the same background from the same community made such an incredible change is truly inspiring, and will be especially to those young boys and girls who go to Jordan Elementary. This also shows us that we, as younger generations, can do something that is greater than ourselves, greater than the city we live in, that we can make an impact on the nation by fighting for what we believe in. It instills in us students that what we do matters and that we can make change. Being a Latina, this would be an honor seeing that someone I can relate to, that many of the students in Orange can relate to, would be getting this recognition. He helped make it possible for myself and others to have the opportunities we have to do something meaningful in life and dream big. As a student, he inspires me to strive for greatness. His determination to create change within his hometown of Almedina sparked a fuse that would not only affect the schools at Orange County, but eventually affect the laws of education throughout the United States. I am proud to say that this man we've come to honor is my great-great uncle, and to be a part of his legacy is truly a privilege. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eva Perez?
Good evening, board members of our Orange Unified School District. It's great being here tonight, especially on the subject matter. I am Janice's cousin, and my father made sure that he moved us, he, we lived in Almedina, and he moved us to Orange because at that time it was an incorporated area in Almedina. So he also was WWII Purple Heart veteran and bought a new home right in front of Palmyra Elementary. So I not only am native and lifelong resident of Orange, I'm a very proud product of the Orange Unified School District, beginning with Palmyra Elementary, on to Yorba Junior High School, and graduated from Almedina High School, my alma mater here. And very exciting time because the high school was just built, and we were the first graduating class, 1969, so I date myself, but pridefully, so. My father didn't want for that to happen to my brother and I, what had happened to his niece, Janice, and it didn't. And I am so grateful that I can honestly say I have not experienced any discrimination or any experiences that my cousin did, and I am so happy and grateful about that. I wish that that could be the case for everyone else. And Lorenzo and my father were friends. Actually, Lorenzo and my father, Jack Perez, and my mother, Mary Solano, they all attended Lincoln in those years at the same time, and they all through and graduated from eighth grade from Lincoln. So our family history goes way back to Almedina and the legacy of my grandfather actually settling here in the late 1800s to have a better life for us. Eventually, we came along, but we've always been involved in the community, and I'm very proud to say that I've also been very involved over 50 years of community service and a public servant for our city of Orange. And I'm just grateful that I have been part of this and that our councilwoman, Anna Gutierrez, has been a big influence with us here and with the city in wanting the best for our community. And I'm just really, really happy that all of you, everything you had to say was just really nice hearing it, nice ring to our ears, and I'm just thankful that you all are here and we have a new board, to be honest with you. Thank you.
John Haug?
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Christensen, and my invaluable fellow residents of Orange, Almedina community supporters, and my fellow educators. Nice to see some of you guys. March 15th, I was blessed to help prepare, promote, and attend a very special event in the Lorenzo Ramirez Library at Almedina High School, where I've taught for the last 10 years. A native of Orange, I was born in 66 when Almedina opened. This event taught about Lorenzo, our local champion of civil rights in education, and was set up by Cal State Long Beach professor, Dr. Stephen Glass, who's been my colleague since we first taught together at Orange High School another nearly 25 years ago. His guest speaker was Santiago Canyon College professor Sammy Rodriguez, who told the story of Lorenzo's fight against segregation in our schools, including Lincoln Elementary and Roosevelt. Other important guests at this were city council member Anna Gutierrez and some who went to school here and knew the Ramirez family. Nice to meet you guys. The primary audience were Dr. Glass's doctoral students, but I also encouraged some, about a dozen current Vanguard students, one of whom was from my English IX class, who had been recently learning from me about the literature of the civil rights, including Lorenzo Ramirez. I'm also a professional biographer of people from diverse ethnic backgrounds, including my late African-American friend, Vietnam veteran, my very dear friend, Brother Jackie Willhite, and my late Japanese-American friend, Robert Wada, who survived the post-in-internment camp and was a Marine Corps Korean War veteran. I hold a master's degree in anthropology. However, I've been teaching English and science fiction for the last 24 years, so my address, my address tonight does conclude some time travel. The past is kind enough to give you lessons, the present is kind enough to give you opportunities, and the future gives you both. Let us therefore dedicate ourselves to the future with honor to the past. Segregation in the first half of the 20th century was an unfortunate, yet sadly accepted commonplace. I've known two Mexican-Americans forced to attend separate, yet not always truly equal schools. This includes my father-in-law, Albert Garcia, originally from Paramount, and Bob Madrid of Redlands. He was the best friend of my friend, Robert Wada. I've also been familiar with Lorenzo, although not from formal education in school, but from my own research at the priceless Orange Public Library and History Center. I also got to work with our city's late great historian, Phil Burgandy, a 1976 OHS grad who interviewed early Orange students, some of whom knew Fred Kelly. So it is with my sincere hope that Dr. Glass's educational event, along with tonight's long-awaited honoring of Lorenzo, will inspire a movement not only to ensure the historic promise to teach Lorenzo's legacy in all Orange schools to all their students in their history and future ethnic studies classes, I'm on that committee, but also bring about a serious revisiting of an earlier request to change the name of one of our schools, one that will outlive potential budget cuts from current declining enrollment, to Lorenzo Ramirez Elementary School. The naming of a school after somebody has already been achieved in recent times in Santa Ana. Manuel Esquera Elementary was named for the late WWII veteran whom I once got to interview. He survived getting blown off the deck of the USS Midway, and then while surrounded by sharks, he prayed that if I survive, I would dedicate my life to helping my community, which he did, working for Bank of America, offering scholarships to Hispanic students. So Lorenzo perhaps may have done something even greater, had a greater impact when he fought in the 1940s for the desegregation of our Orange schools that our students benefit from today, learning to become good and humble human beings in our culturally and ethnically diverse schools. Thank you for your time and consideration in this important and long-overdue matter.
Councilwoman Gutierrez?
I'm short, sorry. Good evening, board, and President Erickson, Vice President Yamazaki, and Trustee Glass, Trustee Vane, Trustee Pelly, Trustee Page, Trustee Thomas, and Superintendent Christensen. So thank you for having me today, and I have to take my glasses off because I can't read my notes with my glasses on. So my name is Anna Gutierrez, and I am a proud parent of two OUSD students. I am a proud graduate of Almedina High School, and more importantly, I am a lifelong resident of the Almedina Barrio for the past 57 years. I am very happy to be here at this recognition with your reaffirmation of Lorenzo Ramirez. I want you to know I first learned about the Mendez versus Westminster case in 2002, when I began teaching in Santa Ana Unified, but again, I didn't hear it at all. I never learned about the et al's until, embarrassingly, five years ago, when I met Sammy Rodriguez, who is a very, much so, a leader and advocate in the Almedina Barrio, who informed me about who these et al's were and did I know about them, and what a surprise to learn that Almedina School District was one of the schools that were being sued, and that a gentleman by the name of Lorenzo Ramirez that lived two blocks away from where I currently live was a man who changed with four other families. Our educational system impacted our schools here in Orange County throughout all of California, and as you know, a precursor to Brown versus Board of Education. So here I am, an Almedina resident my whole life, and didn't know that this had occurred in my neighborhood, and no, the Ramirez's cousins grew up with them, went to school with them, and had no idea the impact that their uncle had had in our neighborhood. And so today, I am very excited that we're continuing this reaffirmation, but Almedina has changed, the neighborhood has changed. Almedina will always, it always has been and always will continue to be, an area where recent immigrants arrive, and these immigrants are unaware of what occurred in Almedina. And here I am, a native, a lifelong resident, and didn't know what had occurred in Almedina. And of note, I knew that the schools existed, but they were knocked down in the 60s, and I knew that they were there because my own aunt attended the segregated schools and told me about this in the 90s, but she just passed three years ago, and she was 92, 93 when she passed, did not tell me about Lorenzo Ramirez because she did not know, even though she lived two doors down from the Ramirez family. So I knew about the schools, yet I did not know the impact or that they were part of this case law. And so how do we continue educating and highlighting this historical event by what we're doing today, right? And yes, in 2011, the Almedina High School Library was renamed in Lorenzo Ramirez's name, and that was very historical, but who sees that besides the Almedina High School students and perhaps the people that visit there? And Almedina High School also sits a bell that, who sees that bell except the high school students, which is the Liberty Bell that we call at Almedina High School that wasn't there when I graduated or when President Erickson was there, but this bell was the bell that sat at the Roosevelt Elementary School, and it's sitting at Almedina High School. Who sees that except maybe the high school students, and do they know its impact? So, you know, I, as a teacher, I'm an educator as well, not knowing this before is very embarrassing, but now I teach it to my students, and I think it's important that we continue highlighting this and informing and giving that historical account, and I think the only way to do that is that this history needs to be remembered, and the way to remember that, and it's my, what I'm advocating the most for, is that there has to be something in Almedina that tells the Almedina residents, especially us Latinos that live there, grow there, have lived there all our lives, what happened here? Tell the story of this brave man, and the only way to do that is if we, we put, we name one of our schools after him in the Almedina Barrio. And I find it appropriate that it be a school close to where he lived, and that's why Jordan is the closest proximity to where he lived, and also, Jordan is a dual immersion school. What was the reason why we were not, why was Janice not allowed to go to school? Because she spoke Spanish, and Jordan is now a dual immersion school. How appropriate it would be if we name, rename Jordan Elementary School to be Lorenzo Ramirez School. So that is my ask of you, board, tonight, to think about this, because this was brought to your attention in 2011, and unfortunately, at that time, we weren't able to make that change, and I would think, I would think that now, knowing how this historical event has impacted us, we do need to make this change. We need to highlight Mr. Ramirez, and we need to make it permanent in the Almedina neighborhood and Almedina Barrio so that history is not forgotten. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Finally, we would like to hear from Michael Ramirez.
First, I want to introduce my older brother, Tony Ramirez. He's in line of, our mother and father had 14 kids. Three passed away, unfortunately.
Could you pull the microphone up a little bit?
Unfortunately, three passed when they were born, but I am the second youngest, they still call me the baby brother, but I, thank you for the board for inviting us, first of all. I am the son of Lorenzo Ramirez. You've heard these inspirational presentations already, but how did we get here? 13 years ago, we saw our old family friends at the Regrand opening of Almedina Library. Their concern for retention of Latino students from Almedina community at Santiago Canyon College showed on their faces. They came looking for a mover and shaker, someone who would make a difference to inspire the community into higher learning, but what they found was a calm, humble man dedicated to a faith, family, and community. This is a short list of what our father's activities were. In 1938, he joined the Catholic Mutual Aid Benefit Club. In 1942, he was in charge of the Braceto Program. In 1943, he accompanies Mexico's Attorney General, Ezekiel Padilla, to San Francisco to expose the abuse on the Mexican workers. In 1944, he was denied enrollment of his three sons, Inacio Jim and Joe. In 1945, Mexican consulate David Marcus files a lawsuit on behalf of five families as Mendez et al. versus Westminster of Orange County et al. In the 1950s, with others, he founded the Logia 43. In the 1950s, with others, he founded the Logea 43, La Sociedad Progresista Mexicana, was president of El Latin American League, president of the Holy Name Society of La Podísima Church, vice president of the Labor Hall 652 of Santa Ana. The best way to judge a person's character is how he treats others and what is said about him. A book titled Segregation Knocking on Schoolhouse Doors, they interview lifelong resident Dan Gomens. He tells how the community learned to navigate discrimination and the despair and frustration they felt in Almedina community. The author asked about a man pushing the case of desegregation, Lorenzo Ramirez. Mr. Gomez replies, Larry was good at speaking English, formulating concepts and ideas, just getting things going. You needed somebody like that, outspoken, someone who wasn't afraid to start a few ways and wasn't afraid of the establishment would come back and pound on him. He just wasn't afraid of that kind of stuff. In 1967, as you can see, El Político calls Lorenzo Ramirez "a leader of leaders." In the upper right-hand corner, it reads, "Equality is our aim." It outlines a lot of our father's activities I have covered and then some. But my best admiration comes from the next article, Joe Esquerra, "Who Better to Implement a 25-Year Plan Left by Lorenzo Ramirez for the Betterment of the Mexican Community." And lastly, in 2016, a bus unveiling at Santiago Canyon College, to our surprise, was paid by fellow labor member Ray Mendoza. He told my sister Phyllis, "When I heard of the donations for the bus, I felt moved to pay for it. Because if it wasn't for your father's advice back then, I would not be the man I am today." We now know the pesticide spraying and the fumigating of Orange County citrus led to our father's early death. Our father was Almedina. And I urge you to help inspire our future children by renaming Jordan Elementary, the school I went to, to the name of Lorenzo A. Ramirez. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much to Councilwoman Anna Gutierrez. Thank you to the Lorenzo Ramirez family. Thank you to our speakers. It was such an educational experience. We really appreciate you coming out. We appreciate your requests. I also want to thank Trustee Glass, excuse me, Trustee Glass, for helping to prepare this agenda item. And to, we just want you to know that the conversation is just starting. It's not ending tonight. So we appreciate it. If you wouldn't mind coming up, I'd like to give you a copy of the Declaration, and maybe we can take a picture for whomever, any of the family members that would like to come up?
Trustee President Erickson, may I suggest that we take a five-minute recess so we can greet our guests and maybe say hello?
Sure. If you would like to do that, we can have a recess at 8:00 and we'll return at 8:05.
Okay.
And I have one other exciting recognition for the Transportation Department here at Orange Unified School District. The Transportation Department here is going to host, is it the 29th? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. On the 29th of this month, they're hosting AZ Bus Sales, is marking its historic milestone in California's journey towards sustainable transportation with the delivery of its 1,000th certified electric bus in California. Orange Unified has been recognized as key partner in this, having been on the forefront of this movement, beginning with our former Transportation Director Pam McDonald, and carrying forward to today under our current Director Christina Celeste Rousseau. Orange Unified District staff will be in video testimonials about the positive impact electric buses have made on district operations, students, and the environment, which will be available for all of the other OC school districts to learn from. I'm sorry, I won't be there. I'll be in Cabo San Lucas. But I will send my Assistant Director here. Thank you so much.
Thank you to all of you. Now go home and go to sleep.
All right, we're going to get started here pretty soon if we could take our seats. Where is Ciara? There she is, okay. Okay. Yeah. We are going to resume our meeting. And I would ask for some consensus consensus from the board that we meet move the board proclamation regarding our school bus drivers up to the next item since they have to get up early tomorrow to work, so. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, so we'll hear item F, Board Proclamation, School Bus Drivers Day, April 22nd, 2025. The proclamation will be presented by our very own Matt Thomas. Just you do it, I mean. The speaker, the microphone's off, if we could get that going?
Good evening. It is my distinct honor and privilege to present the Board Proclamation for School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, which takes place every year on the 4th Tuesday in April. Having started my school transportation career here as a bus driver right here in Orange Unified 30 years ago makes it even more bittersweet. School bus drivers are the first face in education that bus riders see as well as the last in their long school day. I commend each and every school bus driver here at OUSD as well as up and down the entire state of California for driving up to an 18-ton shiny yellow moving billboard with 84 students, up to 84 students, each day, ensuring the safest and reliable ride for each bus rider. I also thank each and every one of you for helping to keep the safest record amongst all 50 states. You're to be commended, you all rock and roll every single day, and then some. You are appreciated more than you'll ever know. Board Proclamation, School Bus Drivers Day, April 22nd. The Board of Education will officially proclaim April 22nd, 2025, as School Bus Drivers Day in Orange Unified School District. Each year, the 4th Tuesday of April, as I said earlier, is designated as National School Bus Drivers Day. This day originated in California in 2009, actually, I believe it was earlier, but I will check in in my little encyclopedia, to draw special public attention to school bus drivers for their services to our schoolchildren. The district is pleased to participate in this observance and welcomes the opportunity to officially recognize and commend the district's school bus drivers for their continued excellent service to our students. Further, the board encourages students, staff, parents, and community members to participate in events and activities to honor our school bus drivers. Their patience, professionalism, and dedication ensure that thousands of students arrive at school and home safely each day. We are great, excuse me, we are grateful for their commitment to student safety and their positive impact on our school communities. In recognition of this important day, the Board of Education will adopt a proclamation celebrating the contributions of school bus drivers and their essential role in supporting student success. I'll now refer to our very own Director of Transportation, Ms. Christina Celeste Rousseau, for a few words.
Thank you very much. We're humbled to be honored and recognized and to receive the continued support by our board. Matt, I want to thank you also for your support to our drivers and to our industry in general. As he mentioned, he started his career here. Our employees work tirelessly every single day. Some of them wake up and they're here ready to go at work at 5:00 a.m., you know, clocking in between 5:00 and 6:00, staying on the clock till, in the wee hours, as you can see, several already at home sleeping, ready to go for tomorrow. Like Trustee Thomas had mentioned, we are the first face that they see in the morning and the last face that they see, so we are educators, we are there to support our students, our parents, and our communities, and we are so grateful for this recognition. We do have a celebration at our bus yard on Tuesday, the 22nd. We welcome all of you to join us. Please come dressed in your jerseys, we are going to be representing. We have great raffle prizes, great awards for our employees, the Nutrition Services Department is providing us lunch, we're going to be barbecuing for our staff, and we are just going to be having a great time recognizing our employees for all the great work that they do. So, thank you very much for everything. We appreciate each of you greatly, and thank you for this recognition.
And I have one other exciting recognition for the Transportation Department here at Orange Unified School District. The Transportation Department here is going to host, is it the 29th? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, on the 29th of this month, they're hosting AZ Bus Sales, is marketing, is marking its historic milestone in California's journey towards sustainable transportation with the delivery of its 1,000th certified electric bus in California. Orange Unified has been recognized as key partner in this, having been on the forefront of this movement, beginning with our former Transportation Director Pam McDonald, and carrying forward to today under our current Director Christina Celeste Rousseau. Orange Unified District staff will be in video testimonials about the positive impact electric buses have made on district operations, students, and the environment, which will be available for all of the other OC school districts to learn from. I'm sorry I won't be there, I'll be in Cabo San Lucas, but I will send my Assistant Director here. Thank you so much.
Thank you to all of you. Now go home and go to sleep. Okay, next on the agenda is a superintendent, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, there was a speaker. I am so sorry. Go ahead. We have one public comment for this item, Esteban Villa. Is he still here? There he is. I'm so sorry.
Good evening to the members, the intendant. My name is Esteban Villa, and I proudly stand before you not just as a union representative, but as a voice for the transportation employees who have long been ignored, overlooked, and silenced. I'm here today to expose the truth that many in this room have known but too few have confronted. Transportation leadership in OUSD is broken. We're not just, we are not just dealing with inefficiencies, we are dealing with intimidation, favoritism, misinformation, and in some cases outright retaliation against employees who speak up. Let me be very clear, this is not about personal disputes. This is about systemic failure. It is about a culture where honesty is punished, where policies are applied selectively, and where power is used not to lead, but to suppress. We are transportation professionals, the first faces students see in the morning and the last they see when they return home. We carry the weight of student safety on our shoulders every day, and yet our voices are disregarded. Our input is shut down and our rights under the contract are repeatedly violated or twisted to suit convenience. The district has invested in buses, but not in the people who drive them. You've trusted management to lead, but have you asked if they lead with integrity? Have you asked why seasoned, dedicated employees are suddenly being written up, silenced, or passed over for assignments without due process? I stand here not to just raise concerns, but to deliver a message. We are done being silent, we are done being afraid, and we are not going away. We demand transparency, we demand accountability, and above all, we demand a transportation department that serves students, not politics. You say you value equity, then start with how our employees are treated. You say you value safety, then start with the psychological safety of our, of your drivers. You say you want trust, then start by listening. We are not here to ask for special treatment, we are here to demand fair treatment. The culture in transportation must change, and it begins with this board holding leadership accountable for their actions or inactions. I thank you for your time, and I sincerely hope the next time I stand here, it is to commend progress, not to expose failure, because we are ready for change, and we will not stop until it happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will have the superintendent report.
Thank you, President Erickson. Each year, the State Department of Education recognizes exceptional schools that are illustrative of the persistence and promise of California's students, educators, and schools. To select California's distinguished schools, the Department of Education uses multiple measures to identify eligible schools based on their performance on the state indicators as specified on the California School Dashboard. Specifically, schools are selected by analyzing data reported through the 2024 Dashboard with a focus on demonstrating excellence and growth in academic achievement and ensuring positive school climate. I'm pleased to share that Taft Elementary School was recognized in the category of closing the achievement gap. They have demonstrated exemplary growth for student groups that have experienced persistent achievement gaps and have also demonstrated strong overall outcomes for students. Also, Noel Canyon Elementary School was recognized in the category of exceptional student performance. Noel Canyon was among the highest in overall student achievement while also showing strong indicators of student engagement and positive school climate. Congratulations to the students, staff, and community of both Taft and Noel Canyon Elementary Schools. Additionally, the State's Advisory Commission on Special Education gives its impact award to the program that demonstrates outstanding efforts to improve opportunities and outcomes for students with disabilities. For 2024-25, OUSD's Special Education's Pathway to Possibility, Inclusion in Action, was selected from a strong group of applicants from across the state for its exceptional impact and innovation. As the inaugural recipient, the program will receive an $8,000 award and will be featured in a statewide video to help share its best practices with other schools across California. I want to recognize and thank our Special Education Department for what they do to support our students. Too bad so many people left. They're missing all this good stuff. And finally, I just received information from the Orange County Department of Education that after their review and analysis, the second interim budget for the district was approved and as submitted without exception, and I want to acknowledge the business services staff for their diligence and hard work in accomplishing that. So, we are healthy financially. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. For my president's report, I'm going to cut it short out of respect for getting to the substance of our agenda. However, I do want to provide an update on the superintendent search, which has been genuinely very exciting. We gathered input from community members, staff, parents, students, and more, and we're thrilled with the incredible pool of candidates that applied, 24 in total, applied for the position. And last Friday, we interviewed our top five candidates, each of whom were highly skilled and experienced, and one candidate stood out really as what we think is the perfect fit for the qualifications we were seeking and the profile that we all developed together, not just the board, but also the community. And as Board President, I'm now focused on working through the contract details, tying up loose ends, and I'm not telling you who the new superintendent is just yet, but we anticipate sharing the news of our new superintendent very soon and plan to finalize the contract for approval at the upcoming board meeting on May 7th. So, thank you for your continued support and stay tuned for updates. So, we will move on next to Board Proclamation in support of Greater Orange Community Arts Theater, GOCAT, and we have special guests here for that. And Trustee Glass will be presenting the proclamation. Mr. Short, nice to see you. Mr. Greenwald?
All right, good evening. The Board of Education proudly recognizes the Greater Orange Community Arts Theater, GOCAT, Foundation for its commitment to enhancing arts education and cultural engagement for students and families within our district. As a 501(c)(3) public charity, GOCAT is determined and dedicated to constructing the first community-based theater in the greater orange area. I think that's going to be awesome. Creating a state-of-the-art 53,000-square-foot facility that will serve as a hub for performing arts, education, and community enrichment. GOCAT's vision aligns with the district's mission to provide equitable access to transformative learning experiences. The Future Arts Complex will feature a 592-seat main theater, a black box theater, and an outdoor amphitheater, ensuring that students, educators, and local arts organizations have access to a world-class performance venue. With encouragement from this board and our entire district, GOCAT continues its fundraising efforts to bring this vision to life. The Board of Education expresses its enthusiastic support for this project and looks forward to future collaborations with GOCAT in fostering arts education, student engagement, and community development. To honor and recognize GOCAT's contributions and impact on students in our, in our district, the board presents an official proclamation of support to GOCAT representatives tonight, these gentlemen that's here, and I'd like to, at this point, allow my good friend and former colleague, Mr. Mike Short, who was also the, the man of the year for the city of Orange several years ago, to say a few words. Mr. Short?
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you for, for your, the proclamation. We really are on our way. We are ready to make this a real reality. Having taught here for 44 years in Orange Unified, I know what we don't have, but I know what we're going to have, because all of us are working so hard to make that happen. I appreciate all the kind words. We are honored by all of that. We want to invite you all to come to our gala, which is coming up on May 8th, from Blueprint to Spotlight. And if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, GOCAT4All, that's how you get to it. GOCAT4All.org, and you can, and buy your tickets right online right there. That'd be a great support, and we appreciate all the support we get from Orange Unified. Let me tell you, my kids went through Orange Unified, and they're highly successful because they had a chance to be in a diverse community and to understand what it is to really get a chance to, to work with all kinds of people and to watch their dreams fulfilled. That's what we're trying to do for all of our other kids, too. So, come and join us on May 8th, and thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I think many of us will be there. Thank you. Your work is inspiring, so thank you so much. We appreciate everything you do.
If you don't mind, can Mr. Short tell us who he brought with him? Because I don't think we.
That would be fantastic.
Well, I know Joe Greenwald, so.
Okay, so tonight I have with me Mark Wimberly from the famous Wimberlys, he's our.
Oh, I heard you.
And Joe Greenwald, committee member, and Paki McFarland, whose kids also, all of these kids went to Orange Unified, so all of their kids went through Orange Unified. And so, they're all with us and they're all working with us on the project to make it successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Yamazaki. All right, next up is the Community Partnership Recognition, Orange Chamber of Commerce, Dr. Ken Miller.
Good evening. Good evening, President Erickson, Board of Education, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Christensen, and the Executive Cabinet. Tonight, we celebrate our Community Partnership Recognition to honor the valuable partnerships that exist between community organizations and the district. As described in the district's strategic plan, under Focus Area 2.0 Dedicated and Engaged Communication, the district seeks to build and maintain strong educational, university, business, and community partnerships, and to cultivate deep-rooted connections with stakeholders. Once a quarter, at least one community partner is recognized by the Board of Education. We are honored to announce that the Chamber of Commerce has been selected to receive our Community Partnership Recognition Award. Orange Chamber of Commerce has been an engaging and valuable partner with Orange Unified School District. Each year, the Chamber and Orange Unified collaborating, creating an informative education day for leadership Orange candidates. The Chamber also has partnered with Special Education to host mock interviews during the department's annual college and career fair, demonstrating a strong commitment to inclusivity and the success of all students. By actively participating in the career fair with our students, the Chamber provides invaluable real-world experience and coaching for our students with disabilities, helping them build confidence, hone their interview skills, and better prepare for the workforce. This collaboration underscores the Chamber's dedication to fostering an inclusive community where every student, regardless of their ability, has the opportunity to achieve their career aspirations and contribute to their community. We congratulate once again the Chamber of Commerce for this well-deserved honor, and I would also like to thank Dr. Su Sing, Dr. Andrew Granite, and Ms. Hannah Brake, who also joined us in presenting on February 21st, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, and thank you to the Orange Chamber of Commerce for all that they do for our district. All right, on to our student board members. Mr. Tran, if you'd like to start, start for us?
Of course, absolutely. Starting off my school report, of course, I'd like to thank the Orange Unified School District Board of Education, as well as the Orange Unified School District community. First and foremost, I, I mean, I have no words for the previous speakers who came today who speak on the legacy of, I believe it was Lorenzo Ramirez. I mean, it really does speak volume to the history that we have here in Orange Unified and telling from yesterday's discussion that we had in our gender preparation with Trustee Glass and Trustee Page. I mean, we really fail to realize that such a legacy of discrimination often comes from our own backyard, right? And it really does speak volume to the history and the legacy that we have here in Orange Unified, and also the continuing, the preservation that entities such as Orange Unified continue in fighting discrimination. So, I thought that was just really amazing, having those public speakers come here tonight. Well, anyways, starting my school board report, Villa Park Winter Guard ended their season performing at La Quinta High School in Westminster for the 2025 championships. The team performed their award-winning show, quote-unquote, "Hide and Seek," a show that also brings awareness on the issue regarding child trafficking, one last time, and took home a score of 84.1, crushing their total goal of breaking 80, and also achieving the highest score in Villa Park Guard history in the past five years. Just recently, we also had our sports assembly, which happened on Friday, April 11th, where we had, where it was hosted at our amphitheater, which was buzzing with energy as students and staff came together to celebrate our spring sports teams during our seasonal sports assembly. This event was months in the making, which also regard, which was necessary regarding our ASB collaboration with sports teams and practicing their dances and organizing their costumes. Students of all grades were able to attend and watch the sports assembly, which was, which was enjoyed very much. Just last week, we also had our election week, which is lots of fun, so if you guys ever came to Villa Park's campus during election week, it's buzzing with posters on all corners of our campus, and also students receiving candies from our candidates as well. I like to announce our new ASB President, Susie Kim, our new senior class president, Kali Kwong, our new junior class president, Ella Chang, and our sophomore class president, Avery Mc Houston. And while we have many winners, we had many, many candidates participate in our election, which really does display the potential and also the confidence that Villa Park High School students have. Regarding some of our traditions, just this weekend, we had our pancake breakfasts, our annual pancake breakfast with the PFSO and others, also, my apologies, I'm kind of speaking too, too quickly. Our annual pancake breakfast has always been done in collaboration with our PFSO and also our other student organizations as well. We had great food, many familiar faces, which I understand several trustees attended as well, and with over 100 people attending, it was great to see so many people come out and support our student organizations at Villa Park High School. And lastly, and of course, I'd like to recognize Mr. Mc Houston, who was just recognized, of course, as leader, as I believe was top administrator by the leadership team here in Orange Unified, just speaking on his legacy that he's leading behind, that he currently has in OUSD. Mr. Mc Houston has served this district for roughly two decades, once at Orange High School as principal, and second as principal at Richland High School. So, he's an amazing administrator, has done so much for Villa Park High School and Orange Unified. Well, anyways, that concludes my student report, and I thank you guys so much.
Good evening, Superintendent Christensen, members of the board and board trustees. I will be giving a report on Orange High School this evening. Having concluded our annual penny drive, I am pleased to report that we have raised approximately $5,000 this year. At our spring assembly, we were able to present representatives from the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society and the Friendly Center with checks for $2,000, $2,500 each. Throughout the month of March and April, we have dedicated countless hours in creating and hosting events to raise funds for this year's drive. The penny drive is not only about raising money, but about fostering a sense of community unity. Orange High School has joined Chapman University's efforts in supporting the Orange County Rescue Mission. From now until May 1st, our ASB will be collecting hygiene products for our neighbors served by the OC Rescue Mission. Should you wish to donate any items, we would be delighted to collect them at our front entrance at our school. Orange FFA, or also known as Future Farmers of America, will be hosting its annual Farm Fest next Saturday, April 22nd. will be hosting its annual Farm Fest next Saturday, April twenty-sixth, on our campus from nine AM to one PM. This event brings the community together through agricultural experiences. Participants can anticipate hands-on learning opportunities that explore the world of farming. FFA would love to have you all there. As we approach May, our Panthers are diligently preparing for AP testing. We extend our best wishes to our Panthers as they prepare for their exams. Spring has arrived. Our Panther athletes are continuing to work hard during this spring season, and we are eager to bring home even more victories. As the school year begins to come to an end, we are thrilled to start our senior activities. Seniors have approximately fifty-six days remaining until graduation, and we are very excited to begin our countdown to the big day. That is all I have for y'all today. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. As we kick off Quarter Four, we're excited to welcome a new group of students to Richland. Our campus continues to grow with fresh energy and renewed focus on academic and support success. We also thrilled to announce the launch of our new handball program led by Coach Maritza. This program adds another layer of enrichment and physical activity for our students, and we're looking forward to seeing it develop over the coming weeks. Looking ahead to May, Richland will be joining three other continuation schools for a collaboration prom event. This is a fantastic opportunity for students to celebrate their hard work and enjoy a memorable evening together. In support of students' wellness, Richland is currently piloting a sign-of-suicide curriculum. Our team will be presenting the data and insights from the program to district leaders and counselors in the coming weeks to support ongoing mental health in activities. Finally, our counselors are teaming up with our career tech staff to host Work Readiness Week. This event will provide students with valuable career preparation skills, including resume building, interview, practice, and job exploration. It's an exciting time at Richland, and we're so proud of the growing collaboration and innovation happening across campus. Thank you.
Good evening, Board President Erickson, Trustee Superintendent Christensen, Cabinet and Community. El Medina is currently preparing for the closing of our school year by electing and appointing our future officers for the upcoming school year. We are currently in the process of solidifying our new ASB members for next year, and I would like to acknowledge our new ASB President, Ms. Brenna Casell, and her leadership accomplishments. I cannot wait to see the new team of leadership that will be leading El Medina next year. On March twenty-seventh, we held our annual Rose Chambault Contest, which stands for Rock, Paper, Scissors. Students and faculty compete against one another for victory with a collection of beaded necklaces that they must collect throughout the day. During lunch, the final two standing, one student member and one faculty member, draw it out and determine the final winner for the day. It is a school-wide event that our campus always looks forward to as it provides a means of fun during a time looming with state testing. Our choir program went to San Francisco over the weekend to compete at a music festival. It was a fun weekend consisting of lots of singing, dancing, and sightseeing across the city. We had a successful run with gold across our three major categories, a trophy for a high overall score, and two of our students, Ms. Audrey Roma and Mr. Maximus Mendoza, won awards for their dedication to the program and musicality. We cannot be proud of our program and the immense amount of hard work that they put toward the festival. In our softball program, our softball champs Caitlin Galasso and Sarah Pinedo were recognized for their accomplishment on the field. Caitlin was nominated for California High School Player of the Year, and Sarah was nominated for California High School Pitcher of the Year alongside being named Orange County's Girl Athlete of the Week by the Orange County Register. We are extremely proud of these talented vanguards for their accomplishment, and we ask for your support in voting for them. You can go to the Elmo Softball Instagram and vote on the link provided. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Christensen, President Erickson, District Trustees, and Community Members. Tonight, I'd like to begin by highlighting a couple sports accomplishments for Canyon. Boys Volleyball became league champions last night with their last game against Foothill and qualified for CIF. The JV Volleyball Team finished their season undefeated. Additionally, Boys Lacrosse expects to qualify for CIF as they are nearing the end of their amazing season. Moving on to the arts, our choir and band put on a great spring concert at the beginning of March. Our drama program also performed a play called "The Drowsy Chaperone" from March eighteenth to the twenty-first, showcasing their talents and hard work. Finally, this week has been our school's Annual International Week, which is mostly run by the IB Diploma Program, but also involves all the cultural clubs at our school and the help of ASB as well as student volunteers. Students are encouraged to participate in culture activities and browse tables that we set up from all around the world in the quad during lunch. There's so much to do, including a trivia game of assigning flags to their country, learning how to dance to Persian music, or even trying food from South Africa. Each day showcases a different region from the world, and loud music from that region is played to complete the atmosphere. To track participation, students get a passport, which they take with them to each booth, and they collect stamps. And it's a really fun way to learn about and appreciate diversity at Canyon. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much for your reports. We always love hearing from you. And remind me again, how many days left of school? Approximately? Approximately exactly fifty-six? How many hours is that? Have you calculated that? Okay. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Approval of the Minutes. I think we'll vote on all three at one time. Yeah, do we? So I had only one edit, and it was as to the, March twelfth minutes. It's very, very minor. On item, Action Item D, it says, "Trustee Yamazaki expressed interest in exploring potential uses for the site to benefit Orange Unified School students." And then it says, "She emphasized that this action does not obligate the district." I would just indicate that was me, so it would be Trustee Erickson, just so that we don't misquote Trustee Yamazaki. And with that correction, do we have any other corrections? Or changes? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, Trustee Thomas, do I have a second? Who was that? Oh, oh, Trustee Vane, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, seven-zero, motion carries. All right, next up, Public Comment. Trustee Page, do we have any blue cards?
We do. We have about four public comments left, three for agenda items, and we have one for seven A.
Okay.
But are we continuing our practice where we listen to the presentation first and then we call-
We are.
-speakers up?
Yes. Okay. So Action Item Seven A is up now, and then we'll hear from the public comment or hear the public comment following that. So, Salima Holguen.
Okay, thank you, Board President Erickson. Tonight, we have an action item for the approval of members of the Seven-Eleven Committee. On August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, we presented the Board with Components of the School Modernization and Renovation for Tomorrow Plan, also known as the SMART Plan, which included discussion about surplus property and Seven-Eleven Committee. We recommended pausing the process until some due diligence was done in getting the information needed for the committee to actually do their work. This included identifying surplus property, and I apologize, there isn't a presentation, because this was actually a presentation that was previously given, so I'm just highlighting the components. So I apologize for not saying that ahead of time. So as I stated, this was on the August fifteenth. I just wanted to highlight to make that connection. So again, this included identifying surplus property, considering physical and historical aspects of the sites, determining surplus area parameters, and obtaining appraisals as outlined in our SMART Plan ideas for framework. Additionally, we also discussed revising the application and establishing bylaws for the committee, which were adopted by the Board at its November fourteenth Board Meeting. So, I do this all the time. Okay. So during that August fifteenth meeting, we also discussed, starting with the portion of La Vida that you see here, so that the committee you're appointing today could have a focus in the future, and the Board could approve different committees as needed for other surplus potential property. So I am pleased to report that we have now completed the due diligence work and are ready to move forward with establishing our District Property Advisory Committee, also known as the Seven-Eleven Committee. We first reached out to those who had previously shown interest. We received an overwhelming response. They completed the new application. We also spoke to the La Vida PTA staff, as well as the La Vida, I'm sorry, the La Vida PTA parents, as well as the staff about the committee and the process, so that we could have representation from the area. We are happy to say that we are recommending a parent and a teacher from La Vida through the application process that took place as part of the nine members being recommended for approval. As Education Code seventeen-three-eight-eight states, "The governing Board shall appoint a district advisory committee to advise on developing district-wide policies and procedures governing the use or disposition of school buildings or space not needed for school purposes." The highlighted area you see is particularly important as it emphasizes the legal requirement. So tonight, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the committee members to the District Advisory Committee pursuant to the resolution on this agenda item so that we may move forward with the work of the committee.
Thank you. All right, do any Board members have any questions, comments? Oh, I'm sorry, we have a public speaker.
Dan Rothenberg.
Hi, my name's Dan Rothenberg. I'm on the proposed committee, so just wanted to say hi. Thanks for considering me. I think you should vote yes.
That was a riveting, riveting campaign speech. Thank you. All right, now do we have any questions based on that comment? Any questions, comments? Okay. Trustee Page.
Ms. Holguen, I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done to really diversify the committee and truly listening to our feedback that we had back in August to revamp it and include not just staff and parents from the community, but also like differing language access and representation. So I just want to thank you and everyone that supported you in that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of committee members to the District Property Advisory Committee pursuant to Resolution one-eight-two-four-two-five? And I'd like to be able to announce who the members are, but I don't actually have that in front of me right now.
They're actually on the-
In the resolution. I know. I, thank you. Why don't we go ahead and, if we have a motion to approve, and then I'll announce the names.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Trustee Thomas? Okay, Trustee Page seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven-zero, so congratulations to. Yay. Eugene Fields, Sophia Medina, Diana Fasenelli, David Emboden, Michelle Counten, Brennan Godsey, thank you, and Dan Rothenberg, and Gillian Miller, and Jonathan Sanks. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have Declaration of Possible Need for Fully Qualified Educators. Assistant Superintendent Nim.
Good evening, President Erickson, members of the Board, Superintendent Christensen, Cabinet, and Community. In accordance with Title V, Section eight-zero-zero-two-six of the California Code of Regulations, the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing requires school districts to submit an annual declaration of need for fully qualified educators as a prerequisite for the issuance of any emergency or limited assignment permits. The declaration outlines the estimated number and types of permits the district may require for the upcoming school year based on the prior year's actual usage and projected enrollment. This includes various emergency and limited assignment permits necessary to address areas where fully credentialed candidates may not be available. The declaration may be revised later in the year if actual permit usage exceeds initial estimates. Tonight, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Declaration of Need for the 2025-2026 school year to maintain staffing flexibility and ensure continued compliance with credentialing regulations established by the state.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item? No? Okay. Does the Board have any questions, comments? All right, do I have a motion to approve the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for the 2025-2026 school year?
I'll move it.
Okay, Trustee Thomas? Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Vane? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing nothing. Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to our Information and Discussion Items. Item eight A is regarding Ethnic Studies and AB one-oh-one update. And we'd like to hear from Mr. Whitmer and Lisa Green.
Thank you. Each speaker gets taller. Good evening, President Erickson, members of the Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Christensen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening on behalf of Educational Services. I'm pleased to introduce our presentation tonight on the development of an Ethnic Studies course for high school students in Orange Unified School District. This initiative is significant for several reasons. First, in accordance with Assembly Bill one-oh-one, one-zero-one, which was enacted in 2021 to amend the California Code, Ethnic Studies will become a high school graduation requirement beginning with class of 2030. As such, students entering ninth grade in the fall of 2026 will be the first cohort required to complete this course to earn their high school diploma. Second, and equally important, the Ethnic Studies course provides students with the opportunity to engage more deeply with the diverse histories, cultures, and experiences of their classmates, families, neighbors, and broader community. It is a meaningful step toward fostering empathy, understanding, and a greater sense of connection among our students. To provide you with further details, I'll introduce Lisa Green, our Executive Director for Curriculum and Instruction.
A little bit shorter. Thank you, Dr. Whitmer. Good evening, President Erickson, Trustees, Superintendent Christensen, Cabinet, and Community Members. On behalf of the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, I'm pleased to present an Ethnic Studies overview. So let's start by looking at the legal requirements for Ethnic Studies. Assembly Bill one-oh-one passed in 2021 requires that all high schools offer a one semester Ethnic Studies course beginning in the 2025-26 school year. In addition, it becomes a graduation requirement starting with the class of 2030, which is our current seventh-grade students. While districts have the flexibility to develop their own course, it must have Ethnic Studies at its core. The law is also clear that Ethnic Studies must not reflect or promote bias or discrimination against any person or group, nor may it teach or promote religious doctrine. These safeguards ensure that the curriculum fosters respect, equity, and academic integrity. Let's go a little deeper into the benefits of Ethnic Studies. Decades of research support the value of Ethnic Studies. So one of the most compelling reasons to implement Ethnic Studies is the strong and growing body of research that shows it leads to real, measurable academic benefits. When students see themselves and their communities reflected in what they're learning, the curriculum becomes more relevant, and relevance drives engagement. Students are more motivated, more likely to participate, and develop a deeper sense of ownership in their learning. The Stanford study conducted with San Francisco Unified School District found that ninth graders who took an Ethnic Studies course had higher attendance, stronger GPAs, and ultimately, it increased the graduation rates. Similarly, research from the National Education Association by Slieder and Zavala shows that culturally relevant curriculum not only helps students value their own identities, but also teaches- also teaches them to respect others, deepening their engagement and sense of belonging. And in Tucson, Julio Camarados researched on the Mexican-American Studies Program, found that students in these courses outperformed their peers on standardized tests and had higher attendance rates. Why? Because the curriculum is rigorous, relevant, and rooted in critical thinking. These studies reinforce what many educators already know. When students feel seen and valued in the classroom, they thrive academically and socially. Now, I'd like to go a little bit into what ethnic studies is. So this quote is from the California Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum Guidance. It really captures the heart of our work. Ethnic studies is about highlighting diverse histories and cultures in ways that are meaningful and relevant to students. Ethnic studies is more than a history class. It's a window into the diverse experiences and culture and stories that shape our country and our own community. At its core, it's the study of race, ethnicity, and culture and context, examining how these identities influence history, literature, and society. But it's also about celebrating rich voices and perspectives, helping students recognize and respect the richness of our shared human experience. And I think that's really important. We have a shared human experience. Ethnic studies uplifts the diverse stories that make up the American experience and helps deepen civic engagement. Because when students see themselves and others in what they learn, they're more likely to care, to participate, and to lead. And perhaps most importantly, it builds empathy, respect, and cross-cultural understanding, skills that are essential for thriving in a diverse and connected world. In October, we shared information about ethnic studies with our families through School Messenger. This included a Google survey where parents and guardians could ask questions and share input regarding ethnic studies in OUSD. We had 292 responses. We heard through this survey strong support from our community. Many of the parents and guardians believe ethnic studies will foster empathy, combat racism, and help students feel seen. They value a curriculum that reflects our local diversity and builds compassion and global awareness. We've also listened to the concerns. Some worry the course will focus too narrowly on a few groups or create division. Others have requested curriculum transparency and raised questions about scheduling and delivery. These concerns will be thoughtfully addressed as we move forward. As researcher Christine Slater states, "Ethnic studies help students to bridge differences that already exist in experiences and perspectives. The goal is connection, not division. This work empowers all students to understand themselves and others more deeply." So let's look at what our ethnic studies implementation timeline is. Currently, we do have an ethnic studies course. Our current ethnic studies course is the Apex Ethnic Studies Course. It's a virtual asynchronous course. It was board-approved in 2018, and it's available currently at OUSD Edge Virtual Academy. Beginning summer 2025, we will expand its offerings to high school students district-wide to meet the requirements of AB 101 that we offer an ethnic studies course starting in 2025-26 school year. So while we do currently have an adopted ethnic studies course, as I said, it is an online asynchronous course. Thus, we are in the process of creating an in-person, one semester ethnic studies course. We're following a three-year implementation timeline. This year, we're developing our OUSD lens, gathering stakeholder engagement, and beginning course development. In 2025-26, we will pilot the course and refine it, and then full implementation is scheduled for the fall of 2026. This year's work includes forming the Ethnic Studies Steering Committee and collaborating with the UCI History Project. We're reviewing curriculum, designing the course, and we will be launching our Ethnic Studies Community Advisory Committee for increased input from our families. All of this is designed to ensure the course reflects both academic excellence and community So I want to take a moment here. When developing an ethnic studies course, it's important that we reflect on our own community stories. And so I'd like to take a moment to honor, as we did earlier, our local, powerful local legacy that began right here where our district stands today. And thank you, board, for recognizing him earlier. We're going to start with Lorenzo Ramirez. He was a father, as was stated earlier, whose children were denied entries to a white school in the El Medina School District, and he took a courageous stand. His efforts became a key part of the historic Mendez versus Westminster case, reminding us that meaningful change often begins with everyday people speaking up. During this time, we also have the Mendez family, also a part of the case, obviously. They were living, though, on a farmland leased by the Munamitsu family, and this family had been incarcerated in a Japanese internment camp. So you see this quiet act of solidarity between all of these families in our local community area and between families of color. It laid the foundation for the case that helped desegregate California schools and set the stage for Brown versus Board of Education. Sylvia Mendez later reflected that her parents fought for her to know her worth and freedom. And Janice Munamitsu reminds us that even in dark times, we can still choose hope, compassion, and unity. And Mr. Ramirez clearly stated in his testimony, "We live in a country where everyone is equal." This slide is more than a history lesson, though. It's a reminder that our district stands on a legacy of courage, resilience, and community. And it's a legacy that we will continue through the work of ethnic studies. So continuing on with our timeline. In fall of 2025, we want to finalize the draft course and select teachers to pilot. The pilot will run in spring 2026, followed by feedback collection from students, teachers, and families. Revisions will be made. We'll be bringing the course to the board before we pilot, bringing the course back to the board after we pilot for feedback and ultimately for adoption. But it just doesn't stop once we have the course. So looking forward, we're committed to ongoing professional development, ongoing course review, and family engagement. We may also explore additional course pathways, such as an ethnic studies course that is also combined with art, so ethnic studies through the lens of art. We have teachers that are very interested in that. And the hope is that we give students choice and relevance. So thank you for the opportunity to share this important update. As we move forward with ethnic studies implementation, our focus remains on building an inclusive, academically rigorous program that reflects our students' lived experiences and prepares them for a diverse world. We're grateful for community input, and we look forward to continue collaboration with our families, educators, and students to ensure that this work reflects the value of our districts. District, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you, Dr. Whitmer. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Nadia Flores.
Good evening once again, Superintendent Christiansen, members of the board and board trustees. Today, I would like to share a statement in regards to the ethnic studies update that was just presented today. I would like to start by saying that these words represent my own opinions and beliefs and not necessarily those of Orange High School. Last summer, I had the opportunity to take an ethnic studies class through the Early College Academy at my school. During this class, I was able to learn about the history and different, of different cultures and experiences of diverse racial and ethnic groups in the United States. During this class, I got to learn about the history of the Menendez at All versus Westminster at All case, where a federal court ruled that the segregation that, where a federal court ruled that the segregation that Mexican-American students in California schools face was unconstitutional. This goes back to one of the announcements earlier in the meeting about the work of Lorenzo Menendez within the Orange and El Medina community. As a Mexican-American student, I and many other students show pride and are proud to be Mexican-American. My ethnicity is something that can never be taken away from me nor from the students at my school. It is because of the extraordinary work of Lorenzo Ramirez and his family that Mexican-American students no longer face these same struggles. Personally, I feel that it is important to implement ethnic studies classes into our curriculum for students to understand that the events that have happened, that these events not only happen within our country but within our hometown. It goes back to the importance of why we study history so that these situations do not repeat themselves. When we talk about these things on a bigger scale, it is easy to forget that these things happened or took place in our hometown. People like Lorenzo Ramirez changed the landscape of our country, and we should devote some time to learn about our local heroes. Once again, these are my personal opinions and beliefs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sanwom.
And I want to thank her. And the course that she spoke to is through our Early College Program at Orange High School. It's a dual enrollment course that they can take in the summer, and they get both college and high school credits. It's a great course.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to comments by the board, questions by the board. That includes student board members, if you're interested, and-- okay. Trustee Pelley.
I have a comment. I'll try to keep it quick. First of all, thank you. That was a really very thorough, excellent report. You know, this is a hot topic, and there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I think it's so important that we've included community input, that you've used research-based facts to talk about it, but also address concerns and that we will continue to address concerns, because I think we need to educate the community about what this is. Because I know there are a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of misinformation, but I just think this is so important, and we had the perfect example tonight. I mean, we, you talked about the shared human experience. We got to hear firsthand from people who have experienced something that most of us haven't. Some of us have in other ways. I think all of us have been othered in one way or another, but to hear that specific experience was amazing, and it helps us to feel those connections when you realize, okay, people have been through things that I never even thought of. And just to have students be able to share those experiences, I mean, you just spoke so eloquently about why students need to hear this, but I just feel this is so important in, we're teaching, we're not teaching kids what to think. We're helping them to be critical thinkers and to have empathy, and these are things we've been doing for years as teachers. This is not something new, but this is such a great opportunity, and I'm just really proud of our district and what we're doing. So thank you again. I could go on, but I'll stop. Thanks.
Okay. Did I call you Ms. Sanwom? I meant Ms. Lopez, and I'm so sorry. Ms. Sanwom was just there. Flores, I'm sorry. Okay. I see Lopez. Flores Lopez. Okay. I apologize. Okay. Do we have any other questions, comments? Okay. Trustee Vane.
I'll just add, most of you know that I teach community college, and so at that level, we are also implementing ethnic studies. So an important part, I think, of talking with our community about this is also that they will see this curriculum also, you know, in college as they move forward, so it's not just limited to what we're doing here in Orange Unified. And thank you for your presentation.
Trustee Glass.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that, and I appreciate you also speaking with the family that was here to get some primary source material. I know that you'll be meeting with folks tomorrow, the Ethnic Studies Committee, I believe. But to piggyback on what my two colleagues already mentioned, I think it's also important that we hammer home the idea that we are trying to be, we're trying to be humane, right? We're trying to make sure that we humanize people. And when I read over the community concerns, I respect it. However, I struggle to understand what would be too narrow when it comes to what we're looking at. We're trying to elevate and uplift, and through your, through your meetings, you'll develop curriculum that will do that. It will be transparent. No one's trying to hide anything, but at the same time, there's fear, right? So we need to address those concerns, and those concerns are real for people. But I think that when you hear from our student board members and other people in the community, you'll realize that it's better to be open and appreciate folks than it is to not know anything and just move forward. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you, Dr. Whitmer, for your contribution to that as well. Appreciate it.
Trustee Page.
Great. Thank you again for being so thorough, and I remember my experience as a high school student in Villa Park. We didn't learn a lot of these stories in our classrooms, but we had to go out and seek and find, like, a lot of these, not just local history, but stories that really represent us. Like Nadia shared, you know, being Mexican-American, we want to hear stories that represent us, and oftentimes, the stories aren't really, like, if they're not telling them, it's told by someone else. But I have a couple of questions, if it's okay. I, so because I was on that journey as a high school student wanting to learn more about, you know, identities and different stories, I ultimately ended up teaching a college course that was cross-referenced. So it was child development but also ethnic studies. And so in that course, I would often tell my students, who were future teachers, like, don't do tourist curriculum, right? So it's like, we're not just here to celebrate a culture and then we're done talking about it. So in your discussions within your committee, are you having those discussions? Or how are we ensuring that we're not, that the ethnic studies course won't be a tourist curriculum type of class?
Yes. So we've talked about that ethnic studies is not multicultural history. That's more of a celebration, which can be a part, but ethnic studies is really, it's really an academic course that looks at the historical and cultural, and looks to build cultural understanding. And there's critical thinking skills in there, cultural literacy, and it's really to help students understand the diverse experiences that we share so that we can develop that dialogue and that mutual respect. But it's not just about celebrating the foods and the great things. It's about really learning about the shared experience that we had and learning about our community, because that's how we can grow. That's how we teach our kids to grow, and that's how we make them want to be leaders and to have a voice.
Thank you. I guess a follow-up question to that is, what kind of grounding work will the teachers do with students leading up to start those conversations?
So we've talked a lot about it's really important in the course that there's time for them to build community within the classroom, and I think that's the first step. So there will be time in the course for them to build those community with each other, and as an ethnic studies curriculum development team, we've spent a couple of meetings building that community with each other. And so learning how you can do that, because we want, we want it to be something that all students feel valued in the course, all students feel heard. So I think that's really the first step. And then you can go into the historical aspects, but then you also go into aspects where students then connect it to their own life. So I've been reading a lot of courses of ethnic studies that other districts have done and are piloting or are using. And so a lot of times, what the units will start in, they'll be around a theme. And then, like, around a theme, who am I? Or some other theme, and they will talk about the historical aspects. They will bring in those primary source documents. But then there will be a time for the student to then reflect on, who am I? Who am I to my community? What are my past experiences that shape who I am? So, you know, you'll have all those aspects built throughout, and I'm not sure if I fully answered your question. Okay.
You did. Thank you. Yeah, setting agreements, I think, you know, setting the norms within that classroom culture is really crucial. And then, I think on one of the slides, you mentioned professional development for our teachers, but I'm really curious about, like, who would be qualified to teach an ethnic studies class, and would they be our current teachers, or would we be hiring someone with, like, an ethnic studies degree?
So currently, the way an ethnic studies course is built, the one that we are currently building, that's just a one semester ethnic studies course with ethnic studies at its core, it would be a history/social science credential that they would need. If in the future, we develop one where it's like ethnic studies through the, one district has an ethnic studies through the lens of photography, and so then that would be a teacher credential-- credential to teach photography. And then, what we want to do, and what we've been working with the team, we do actually have people in our district that are teachers that have taught ethnic studies before, at the high school level, or even at the college, community college level, but we will need to make sure that we train them and spend that time in training them. So, we've been training our team on what ethnic studies is and really building that, and that's something that we'll make sure that we do with our teachers. We're so new into it, we can't tell yet what the need will be for new staff or current staff to actually teach it, but we really want to make sure that our teachers that are teaching it are trained, have a support system, a community within themselves, to really kind of talk and collaborate with it. So, we will make sure of the training, for sure.
Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Trustee Thomas.
I must thank you also for that beautiful presentation. Being a third-generation Orange Unified student, I have heard so many stories between my grandmother, God rest her soul, my grandf-, or I'm sorry, my father, and my mother's best friend, who grew up in the El Medina area, and nothing makes me cringe more than hearing the word segregation. And before I start crying, I'm going to end there. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that proves the point that it, these stories are so important, and they do form, you know, we all have a shared experience of being here, but the former experiences, the historical experiences are very different for different people, and I think that that does build empathy, as you sort of just demonstrated, to hear those stories and to hear the stories that we heard today. And I am grateful, too, that you got some information from the speakers that we heard from today, because that firsthand experience was absolutely incredible. But again, thank you, Dr. Whitmer, thank you, Ms. Green. We appreciate it. Any other comments?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Tran?
I have just several questions, if I may. First and foremost, thank you for, of course, Assistant Superintendent Whitmer for providing this amazing presentation. I have one question regarding the pilot program that would be implemented next year. Would your pilot program essentially be an extension of the current program that we have regarding ethnic studies just for high school students, or would that, would the pilot program be taught in classrooms?
The pilot program is for our high school, one semester course.
I see, and that would also be online via Apex, is that correct?
No. The course that we are building is an in-person course.
I understand. Okay. And another question that I do have is regarding, so it says here, possible creation of additional courses for students to meet with, meet the ethnic studies requirement, providing them with a choice. These courses could be ethnic studies through the lens of the content area. Instead of adding additional courses, can also be seen that there could be a combination of current courses that could be offered?
So, you could have an ethnic studies course that counted, say, for the VAPA requirement and for the ethnic studies requirement, both?
I see. And has the Educational Services Department, I mean, investigator looked into the fiscal impact into implementing the ethnic studies requirement? Because I understand that the state's mandating these requirements to graduate, however, are not providing additional funding to provide, to pay for these courses.
So, the state has provided us with funding to develop our own course.
I see.
And so, we do have the funding for that, and then it will be another course that will, we have the student attendance, and so it'll be used from our regular allotment of sections that we give as a school district, so in that respect, it wouldn't be an additional cost.
I see. That's wonderful. And one concern that I do have is that, you know, as you may know, Villa Park High School and Orange Unified, we're very glad and we're very happy that OUSD and VPHS, we pride ourselves in the fact that we're able to be productive and able to be efficient. For example, if I'm interested in removing a graduation requirement over the summer, I could do that via SCC or via Apex. One concern is that if we do teach ethnic studies in person, that would, I mean, my philosophy is less is more, right? That such additional courses could take away from other programs that are being offered at Villa Park High School. For example, it would be a CTE program that's typically offered at the beginning of the year for freshman students. What would that look like, you know, with the implementation of an in-person ethnic studies requirement? So, that's just one concern I have as a student at Villa Park, and it may be different elsewhere. So, thank you so much.
Well, we're all about choice here as far as students, so if a student did not want to take the in-person ethnic studies course, then they would be welcome to take the Apex version of ethnic studies over the summer, or they could take the dual enrollment course like Ms. Flores Lopez spoke about through Santiago Canyon College. So, students have a choice. This isn't the only, they don't have to take the one ethnic studies course that we're building. Right now, we have the Apex choice, we have dual enrollment, and we have that course, and then we hope to, in the future, build new courses.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes, Trustee Yamazaki.
First of all, I want to thank you so much for all your hard work on this. Ethnic studies is actually very close to my heart. I really appreciate the fact that you put together a committee and got community import, input. As you know, our community is so diverse, and I think that was really important. As someone of Asian descent and born in California, I appreciate OUSD moving forward on this. My family has been here for generations. My dad was born here, my grandparents came here when they were really young, and yet very little is taught when I was growing up about our histories, being here, and our experiences and contributions, and I feel like that's the case for many of the ethnic groups. Their voices are simply just not heard. My husband's family was placed in internment camps when they were young, and I clearly remember when my son came home from high school, and he goes, you know, they only talked about it for half of 10 minutes, and so, just feel like they kind of glossed over it. And, but yet, that was a really big, important part of our history, our family's history. My father-in-law was in a camp for over four years, and there was a lot going on, and barely people knew about that. They didn't know about his experiences. There was a story where everybody had to save all their sugar, and they all put it all together so they could make a dessert. I mean, that's what they had to do, and that was their community experience, or how baseball was played amongst the kids there, and therefore, that's why baseball is really popular now, too, because that's over generations. And so, I think those things are so important to build our families, to build, to be proud of our background. And I'm going to just tell a funny story, because my son, you know, he was, he's like, "Mom, don't make me any Asian food, because, you know, people look at me funny." But today, I see kids sharing seaweed together, you know, this, in their little package, and, like, they're all passing it out, and it's not a big deal, but even just 10 years ago, that wasn't something that he or, you know, was, like, proud of. And so, I feel like we have a lot, we've done a lot, but we have a lot more to do, and so, I'm very excited for this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Yamazaki. Anybody else? Are we good? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Item... Okay. Item 8B, Ms. Break, the Communication Platform Committee. Oh, Dr. Whitmer again.
I'm back.
I only have a couple of names on here. I don't have your name, so I apologize.
No problem. Good evening again. This evening, we are pleased to share a presentation of the work completed by District Committee tasked with reviewing communication platforms currently used across Orange Unified School District, as well as high-quality communication platforms for potential future use. The purpose of this committee was to evaluate existing tools, explore potential alternatives, and ultimately identify a platform that best supports consistent, effective communication between schools, families, and the broader community. Over the past several months, the committee has engaged in a thorough review process that included stakeholder analysis and input, as well as platform demonstrations. Tonight's presentation will outline the process itself, key findings, and the committee's next steps. While no action is requested this evening, this information is being shared in preparation for a recommendation to be brought forward for board approval at a future meeting. At this time, I'd like to introduce Hannah Break, Communications Coordinator here in Orange Unified.
Good evening, Board President Erickson, Trustees Superintendent Christensen, Executive Cabinet, and members of our community. My name is Hannah Break, and it's a true honor to be here to share the progress of the Communications Platform Committee. What I'll present this evening reflects a collaborative effort built on thoughtful conversations and meaningful engagement. I'm deeply grateful to all who have taken the time to participate in this important process. As we know, effective communication is the foundation of a strong school district. A unified communications platform can significantly enhance efficiency, improve user experience, protect data privacy, and strengthen our district's brand. So, why do we recommend a single communication platform for district-wide use? A unified system would streamline communication by offering a one-stop-shop for families to access information, improve the user experience with a consistent and intuitive platform that grows with families as students advance through the grade levels, reinforce district branding for professionalism, consistency, and trust, so families can recognize and rely on official OUSD communications, enable help desk support for troubleshooting and training, and ensure compliance with data privacy standards. So, OUSD is a large and diverse district. To find a solution that works for everyone, we formed the Communications Platform Committee. This group has met several times to discuss communication challenges and goals, review platforms, ask questions and express concerns, and engage in thoughtful dialogue as part of this process, with the goal of being able to provide a well-informed recommendation for district-wide implementation. So, our Communications Committee includes 30 participants. Though many serve multiple roles, you may notice the numbers don't quite add up. Our members included high school students, teachers, principals, assistant superintendents, classified staff, OUSD parents, and leadership team employees. So, members were primarily recommended by division leaders and represented perspectives from every level, elementary, middle, and high school, along with departments across the district office and the call-in site as well. So, we also included individuals with specialized insights, such as special education, student and community services, nutrition services, and CARES. So, it really is a cross-section of our district. So, right now, a wide range of communication tools are being used across the district, creating inconsistencies that can be confusing for families. Our main tool is School Messenger, which can call, text, and send emails in nine different languages. However, it has mixed reviews with concerns around character limits, opt-outs, and user experience. We also use the OUSD app, which has had technical issues and limited engagement, and other tools at the school, program, and classroom levels, which include apps such as Remind, Class Dojo, and Blooms. Additionally, we rely on social media and our district website, but these require families to proactively seek information. So, to better understand the landscape, I reached out to peers in the Orange County Department of Education Public Information Officer Group. Most districts are currently using Parent Square, either exclusively or in conjunction with other apps. Here's what we learned. La Habra and Ocean View use Parent Square, but also have individuals using other apps. Newport Mesa is piloting Parent Square and plans to roll it out district-wide soon. Los Al in Fountain Valley exclusively use Parent Square currently. And a survey of the OCDE PIO group indicated that those districts using Parent Square widely recommended it for its effectiveness and ease of use. So, one of our initial committee discussions included the features and functionalities we identified as important considerations when discussing and reviewing various options. We determined that an ideal platform should support multiple languages with automatic translation based on each family's home language, be easy to use even for families with limited tech experience, be free for families, integrate with our ARES student information system and staff single sign-on for seamless use and security, connect with our district website allowing for selective content display, and offer notification preferences so users can choose not to receive alerts after hours, on weekends, or during family time. Additional desired features include custom group creation for programs like athletics, school clubs, PTA, PFSO, and internal staff groups, push notifications, which were a top request from our high school student members, year-round access to support programs like CARES and expanded learning, built-in scheduling tools making it easier to coordinate parent-teacher conferences and volunteer slots, secure data handling, and the ability to automatically report or provide access to attendance, grades, and missing assignments. It's a robust list, but each feature supports stronger, more inclusive communication. So, we explored several communication platforms, recognizing that communication can mean different things to different providers. So, Class Dojo is primarily a classroom management tool for behavior updates, and it's not designed for district-wide communication. Ed Leo is focused on website management with multi-channel messaging. Parent Square, also called ARES Communications, is a comprehensive communication tool with automatic translation, multi-channel delivery, and robust engagement features. Power School, of which School Messenger is a component, is a student information system that includes messaging capabilities but is primarily designed for tracking academics. And Talking Points enables two-way translated communication mainly between teachers and families, and this is to support engagement. So, the committee's consensus at this time is to recommend piloting a platform across a diverse selection of elementary, middle, and high school sites. The exact scope and timeline of the pilot are still being determined, and the committee consensus regarding the platform is still to be finalized, and studying how learning platforms such as Google Classroom and classroom management tools like Class Dojo interact with the proposed communication platform. By piloting a platform in a thoughtful and inclusive way, OUSD aims to improve communication practices across the district and better serve the needs of our diverse community. The pilot would be monitored and evaluated based on feedback from parents, teachers, and administrators, engagement metrics and communication reach, equity of access across languages, devices, and user groups, and integration with our existing systems and processes. Focus groups from the pilot sites would meet to assess the platform's effectiveness. If successful, the Communications Platform Committee would recommend a district-wide rollout. It's important to note that this would be funded by the district and not come out of the school site budgets. The next steps, the committee will meet again on April 23 to finalize our consensus and recommendation for the board's consideration. And again, I would like to extend a huge thank you to all of the members of the committee for sharing their time, ideas, and support in strengthening communication across our district. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item? Okay. All right. Again, thank you, Dr. Whitmer and Hannah Break, and, I mean, I just commend you for getting on this so quickly and so thoroughly, so thank you for that. I will open it up to comments. Okay, Trustee Thomas.
Just a quick thank you very much for that presentation, and the school district where I work, neighboring to Orange Unified, we use Parent Square, and it is very, very helpful to parents and to all of the staff, so just my comment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Glass.
I'm excited about this, because as a parent in the district and having students in two different places, it's kind of hard to keep up. So, when the superintendent brought this to our attention, it seemed like just a breath of fresh air. So, I'm happy for the due diligence to look into this. I'm looking forward to the pilot, and I hope we find success with this.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Yamazaki.
Just have a quick comment. So, once you roll this out, would you be able to give us kind of like an idea of how it works as board members? Because not all of us are current parents, so...
Oh, what, platform we select?
Yeah.
I mean, so that will be finalized hopefully at our next meeting, which is next Wednesday, the 23rd.
My point is, I want to see how it works, too.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
So, we have to select something, and then how we're going to implement it, and all of that's going to be discussed next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Vane.
I am a parent in the district, and I was wondering how the pilot schools are, would be selected, or...
That's also...
I know you're going to do it next week, but I would be curious, I guess, to also pilot it myself, or, like, maybe see videos, and I had the same question as Trustee Yamazaki.
We'll also be talking, if I could jump in for one second. We've talked about professional, or staff involvement, training, sorry. We've talked about training as well, that training has to be developed for our staff so that they're able to not only use it themselves, but guide parents and families in terms of the use of the product as well. We'd certainly like to share all of that with you as a board as well.
I guess a related question. One of the amazing things possibly is the help desk. Would that be within the district, or does the platform itself also have, like, a 24-hour help desk? Because some platforms I know have that. Because some platforms I know have that.
So, the platform does have extensive support, but if everyone's using a unified platform, then internal staff also could be trained on that specific thing, so that we have a lot of support for everyone using it, especially if it's right. It's a big district, so if something's onboarded across the board, we're going to need all hands on deck.
Sure, thank you. Trustee Page.
I just want to thank you and the committee for really looking into the feedback that was given in terms of the wealth of apps that we have in our district and how we can really like be able to attract the best things from all of those apps and find one that could really unify all of us, and also for looking at it through the equity lens of ensuring that it's user-friendly and that everyone can have access. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we look forward to future reports on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, the consolidation presentation. Assistant Superintendent Holgi.
Okay. Well, thank you again, Board President Erickson. And just like the previous presentation, we are providing the board with an update on the progress for our consolidation study. So, let me begin by reviewing our timeline. On January 23rd of this year, the board took action on the superintendent's recommendation to conduct a study on the school consolidation to address declining enrollment in our elementary and middle schools. Since February, we've been in the pre-planning and data gathering phase, which will continue until the end of this month. Beginning April 28th through June 9th, we'll hold our consolidation committee planning meetings where the committee will analyze the data and develop options. And I just want to note that these, this, the June 9th date is tentative in terms of when we're hoping to accomplish everything. Obviously, if we need some additional time, then we'll be adding additional meetings, but we're being hopeful that we'll be able to accomplish it by then. In August, we plan to present the, present formal recommendations to the board based on the committee's options.
I always do that. Okay.
So, the committee's structure has been designed to ensure diverse stakeholder representation. It will include eight parents with two from each feeder pattern, eight labor partner representatives with each union selecting one member from each feeder pattern, and eight site administrators representing each feeder pattern. District leadership will serve in a support capacity and as facilitators of data. I want to emphasize that participation on this committee is voluntary, and we're currently in the process of finalizing committee membership. This is a staff-appointed committee, not a board-appointed committee, which allows us to move forward efficiently while maintaining board, community, I'm sorry, representing community representation. The committee's formal charge is to study the impact of declining enrollment at our elementary and middle schools using data focused on capacity of program accessibility for all impacted, increasing resources for students, staff, and community, and enhancing the facility needs as part of the long-term facilities plan with the goal of providing options to be considered and taken for recommendation to the Board of Education. This comprehensive charge ensures that the committee will consider multiple factors beyond just enrollment numbers. To accomplish this charge, the committee will analyze data in four key areas. They'll identify enrollment trends and capacity availability at our elementary and middle schools and provide options for consideration of schools to be considered. They'll evaluate the condition of existing facilities to help provide viable options. They'll consider the unique educational programs at each school to ensure valued programs can be maintained and/or enhanced. And will also identify transportation and boundary options for students who might be impacted by the consolidation options. The committee will use specific criteria organized into four categories to develop their recommendations. Enrollment data will include 10-year forecasts by school and grade. Facility data will examine recent infrastructure investments, overall facility condition, and capacity and campus size. Student service operational data will look at special program locations and site feasibility, transportation impacts, and possibilities for restructuring grades. Finally, location data will assess capacity at adjacent schools and the location of specialized programs. I also want to add that more data may be requested of the committee as they dive into analyzing what we have put together for them to work off of, so they may explore various options. So, also their input in regards to what they want to look at is going to be considered. The factors, the committee will weigh primary factors in their analysis that are not limited to the condition of school facilities, the capacity to accommodate additional students, special programs that may need to be relocated, transportation implications, educational program, continuity, and neighborhood impact. Each of these factors represent important considerations beyond simple enrollment numbers, ensuring that our approach is holistic. And again, I want to emphasize that the overall all-goal of this consolidation study is not merely to close schools, rather we aim to examine options to consolidate schools in ways that enhance programs, services, and facilities across the district by providing more resources and opportunities for students, teachers, and all stakeholders.
Sorry. Okay. Got to get... And we will open up to questions.
Thank you. And again, I commend everyone for getting on this so quickly. Superintendent Christensen for really getting the ball rolling on this, and I think it's such an important process, and I appreciate the holistic review, that the criteria really do embrace so many areas that are so important, because this isn't just about saving money or, you know, whatever. It's about the whole student experience, the whole educational experience, and I know that we're all really committed to making sure that we are, you know, saving resources so that we can improve our student experience. So, with that, any other comments, questions? Trustee Pelley.
Thank you. Great report. You've been very busy, as always. Yeah, I agree that there's so many things that you have to take into account, and I'm so glad that we have, it looks like it's going to be a great committee with good representation. Bless you. My, my biggest concerns, and I feel like you are addressing them, but I just want to make sure that we are really focusing on, you know, the repurposing of schools, and I've been reading a lot about that, and I know there are a lot of districts that are repurposing, and I'm sure we're going to look into that, but I think we can see what other districts are doing to get some ideas and really think out of the box, because we have so many needs in our community, and if there's a way that we can reuse, reuse, repurpose some of these schools for some of these great community centers or whatever it may be, I think there's so many great options out there, so I hope that we'll do, you know, some research into that as well. I think it was maybe CSBA, something I just read about repurposing. I'll have to see where that was from, but there's a lot of information out there, and I think we can really think out of the box. My other big concern is just transportation, and, you know, that's going to be a huge challenge. I know, you know how that goes. But I, I want to really make sure that we're, we're, we're providing transportation to anyone that needs it, to make sure they're getting to the, to the school that they need to be at or the closest school, or, you know, whatever we need to do, because I think sometimes that's overlooked, and we think, well, you know, a mile and a half. Some of these kids live a long ways away, and they can't get to school, and even when they're in a bus route, that makes it hard. So, I just, I don't know, I just want to make sure we're really looking at, at, maybe we have to think out of the box, but providing transportation for the kids that are really going to need it. Special ed is going to be involved, obviously, in, in moving kids around, so I'm glad that you're looking at all those programs. I know you guys will take it onto account, but I, I just wanted to kind of make those comments. And again, thank you. This is exciting.
Thank you, and great input, and that's why I want to emphasize that additional requests for data may come about from those options that committee members are bringing about.
Trustee Page, I wanted to confirm, there's no public comments on this item. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right, anybody else? Trustee Yamazaki.
Thank you. I think I know the answer, but just for the purpose of the public, I want to make sure that it is out there. Are you looking to consolidate elementary schools only, or consolidate, or taking into count middle or high school, or how does that look? Or is that, you're going to leave it up to the committee completely, or what is the idea?
The study is focusing on elementary and middle schools, and those would be the options that the committee would present based on the data that's being presented. So, we will be providing them all of the data enrollment capacity information for our elementaries and our middle schools.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to make sure that this process is fully transparent and that the concerns of the community is heard. I know this is a big deal, and so I, I want to make sure we, like, any of their fears or address any concerns that they may have. So, I, but I do appreciate the work that you're putting into this, because I know it's not easy.
Right, and that's why we're starting with the committee as providing those options so that we can continue the growth from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I can add, I just, I think that the goal isn't to say, okay, there's a committee, and then the next thing you're going to see is a report that says, here's a recommendation, right? There'll be updates so that you know what's going on, what's being done, and how the progress is going. So, you'll also need the same information that the committee gets, because ultimately you all are going to be the deciders on what schools get consolidated. So, all that, it wouldn't do any good to not share that information with you as well. So, even though it's, it's a committee, a working group, if you will, that I've asked Selena to bring together, and she's doing a great job, and everybody providing support, staff providing support for that, we're going to want to be able to share that information with you as well. Okay, so it's not, you won't be blindsided.
So, we'll be getting that information concurrently? Okay.
As close as we can work out, but yes.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
No, it is.
It'll give us time to really absorb and to really think about it, too.
Right, because it's not, you know, no, no, no trustees are on the committee, but it doesn't mean that you don't have access to the information. It's not embargoed, it's not a secret, right? It's, it's facts. We're going to be gathering facts for people, and, and that's already started. She's, they've done a great job of bringing that together. So, as they receive things, that can also be shared with you, so you have an understanding of what they're looking at. So, when they come with their options, you'll understand how they came up with that, as opposed to trying to do all that education in one night, you know, in August.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what your concern is, right?
Yes.
You have a sense of what's going on.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Page.
Under the criteria of data that you're pulling in, doesn't state it, but I'm just curious if you're using the facilities master plan to kind of inform that, and then also that massive meeting spreadsheet that you have with like all the facility needs in our entire district, is that also a part of this?
Correct, correct, and that's why this pre-planning in terms of getting all of that data together is trying to condense it so that when we do present it to the committee, it is in a way that they can really look at it and analyze it. But yes, we are gathering data from those two documents.
Thanks. Trustee Bane.
It also doesn't note staff, so I didn't know like the capacity of the school, does that include teachers, or, you know, is that on here?
In terms of, well...
How many teachers we have, and then give it, you know, give an enrollment, because that's a part of it.
Right, well, in terms of the, the staff, we would make sure that the staff that would be consolidated into that staff could be absorbed as part of that capacity.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything, anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much. And again, we look forward to hearing more from you, from the committee and from you. Thank you. Okay. Item 9A is consent items, and consent items are acted upon by one motion. Any such item can be considered separately at a board member's request. Does anybody want to pull any consent items?
We do have one public comment for 15A.
Okay, all right. Do you want to go ahead? Yeah, go ahead. Jolynn Ling.
This is real quick, it's just 15A is on crossing guards in Orange. I just wanted to make sure that the board was also remembering the whole district and how broad it was, where incorporated, we're in unincorporated Orange County in some areas, Anaheim. I know Anaheim's been pretty good about providing crossing guards, but unincorporated Orange County, if not crossing guards, maybe we need to talk to them about warning signs or flashing lights, so make sure all of our schools have safe walks to campus. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, is, would anybody like to pull an item? No? Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Thomas, do I have a second? Trustee Pelley, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes 7-0. Okay. All right, item seven, public comments on non-agendized items. Jolynn?
Non-agenda public comment.
Board, trustees, superintendents, it's been so long since I've got a chance to talk with you. Really, this is another really quick one. It's just a problem that we're having at our school site, and I'm sure is pretty universal, and I know that we're working on ways to fix this, is absenteeism, and we've done like the trophies and the awards, and that really seemed to work for six or eight months, but it's kind of plateauing a little bit, but that's still something that's very important to the school's funding, the district's funding, and all of that, how to get students to school and make sure that they know it's important. And I don't know what the answer is, but I think that's something that is really important for the board to put as a focus, that we need to make sure we're figuring out plans to reduce absenteeism. Thank you.
Thank you. Very important. We agree. Okay. Other business, board staff, recognition and comments. So... Hello? Does anybody have any comments? Trustee Thomas.
I had the opportunity to go visit my elementary school, my first school site visit, Cambridge, with our Madam President on St. Patrick's Day, and from there, we went to West Orange and then on to Lamson. And I just want to say, we were greeted so warmly by staff and students that they had walk around with us. Besides that, everyone was in the green, wearing... It was just unbelievable. Everybody was so into it. But anyway, it was, including me, you're right, I did have on my green vans. But most of all, I was blown away at Lamson. I drove the Lamson route out of there to Orange High School for many years, and I never realized how large that property was. Oh, my goodness. But anyway, other than that, it was a great day then. On Friday of that same week, I had opportunity to go with, again, our Madam President to Villa Park Elementary, where they received the attendance award, so we got to see that at their assembly, and we got to see Ms. Bane over here and her two boys, one of them received an award. Amazing. And then, final stop that day was Sarah Villa, and I was also blown away there. The amazing education going on in these schools, in our schools, is top-notch, so I thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Thomas, and I enjoyed going with you and seeing pictures of your father's elementary school class. Okay. Trustee Pelley?
Yes, just quickly, I echo all the good things about the pancake breakfast over Villa Park High School. I've, I've gone by and kind of hung out there, but I haven't actually attended until this year, but it just gets better and better every year, and it's such a great community event. I just love when the community comes together and seeing all the, all the different people and elected officials and families and dogs and whatever else was there. No, we don't allow dogs. Not mine, he wasn't there. But it just was a great event, and that was a lot of fun. But I wanted to just speak again about tonight. It was such a, another great meeting of just celebrations. I mean, what a wonderful community we have, and I just... I mean, what a wonderful community we have, and I just, every time I'm up here, people ask me, you know, aren't the meetings boring? And I know we promised to make them boring, but I enjoy them so much. We have so much to be thankful for, and I am just so proud of all of, all you guys sitting back there, our executive directors, that don't get a lot of recognition, but they stick through every meeting. You all are working so hard, just all of the different reports and things we had tonight. And I'm just so proud of our district. We're just doing such a great job. So I'm going to pat us all on the back, because I think we're doing a great job, and that helps, our community is a big part of that as well. So staff, students, everybody, just yay, it was a good celebratory meeting.
Thank you. Yes, there's many good things happening in our district. But as we're ending the school year, and I'm constantly reminded by our seniors that the school year is ending, and many of whom are also looking at their options after graduation, and some are looking into college and university options. Currently, I'm experiencing some things, and I think, as many of you know, I'm currently a third-year doctoral student, and there have been many changes in the last couple weeks. The campus is just a completely different environment, and the students feel tension, faculty worry about funding, and so there's just a lot of uncertainty happening on our campus right now. But knowing that college is already a challenge, and there's a potential new reality of our high school seniors going off to college and also facing that as they go, I just hope that they see and understand that our district offers a lot of resources. And so our student community services department has done a great job sharing information about immigration and knowing your rights, and so if you do have additional questions, I just encourage everyone, not just our staff but our families, to go to them if they have any questions. But then also, our community leads and liaisons are wealth of knowledge, and so if there's anything that's concerning to our families, I just want to encourage them to go to them. And then, in a couple Saturdays, our district is hosting a gaming academy. I wasn't sure if everyone knew that that was happening, but as an OUSC parent, I'm excited to go check that out. It's called Level Up Your Learning, and this one specifically is happening at Villa Park High School. So I'm excited that my own student gets to go to her future high school and visit our new buildings. It's an innovative and encouraging way to see staff develop a program that caters to students in areas that they're interested in, through gaming and computers and equally teaching problem-solving skills and team-building activities and encouraging collaboration. So I really look forward to feedback from a lot of families who attend that, and also want to give thanks to the ed tech team for being innovative and creating these opportunities for our students to want to go to school on a Saturday. So thank you.
Yamazaki?
Thank you. As mentioned by my colleague and also student board member Tran, we went to the Villa Park Pancake Breakfast last weekend, and I just want to say that it was awesome to see so many community members there. I mean, they are coming back year after year. We had former parents there as well as former alums, I mean, well, alums, and so, and they were there to support the community. And what was really nice is the Villa Park Rotary, they invited us, and they served us breakfast, pancakes, sausage, the whole thing. It was fun to see the students perform, and there was fundraising baskets, and so all in all, it was really a wonderful community event. So we just want to thank all the volunteers for putting it together, especially the Villa Park Rotary. Thanks.
Trustee Bane?
Yeah, so I've been busy. You know, I'm new, so I'm trying to make my way around to many of the schools. Over the past month, I visited California, I Inspire, and Taft. I also, just this week, visited Noel Canyon and Olive, and I've learned a lot about all of our different programs, and it's been really great to see what we're doing with Gate and Avid and our game prevention programs and our technology. There's really a lot going on. My colleagues here have echoed just how awesome our district is. I also attended our VAPA showcase. I brought my children, and they had the opportunity to see our fantastic, you know, band and orchestra students, really the best of the best, and it was great. As everyone's mentioning, the Villa Park Pancake Breakfast, I don't think anyone has mentioned the firefighters were there, and my son was super excited to see the fire truck there, and so it was a really fun addition to our morning. And lastly, I'll mention that I had the opportunity to attend my first graduation as a trustee, and it was my honor to receive some of the graduates at Richland this past month. So I look forward to attending some of the upcoming ones in June.
Trustee Glass?
Thank you very much. Just to start off with, I'll be brief, I'm lying, so the Chapman Hills Elementary, Ms. Safa, she invited trustee Erickson and I to her Passion Projects program with her youngsters. And so I just, I can't name everybody, but I just have to give some shout-outs to some of the students. So to Stella, Stella made brownies. I lied to her and said it was going to ruin my diet. It didn't. I ate quite a few of them, so it was really good. Thank you very much, Stella. Demetrius, super-nice young man. I let him know that I had a friend in elementary school who was also named Demetrius, and he kind of lit up, which was pretty cool. My good friend Dion. Dion wants to be a chef. That was his passion project, so he promised to make something next time. So we're going to go for that. Benson, if there's any anglers out here, those people who fish, he made lures, really cool lures, and he puts them in freshwater, but he's going to possibly try and put them elsewhere, maybe in the saltwater, to see if it works out. So just the idea that some of the students were entrepreneurial in that way, and they were looking out for things that they were really passionate about, and they'd been working on this for a few months, was really something I was super excited about and enjoyed, that experience that morning. Trustee Page and I, along with student board member here, Tran, we were at Orange High School yesterday, and so Dr. Whitmer, and we got to tour the entire school, and we're so fortunate to have Ms. Kami Kenyon as the Activities Director help facilitate this, but it was very much student-driven, okay? So my area that I was really excited about was going to the farm, and the FFA officers, Jacqueline, Adon, Sidlali, and Beatrice did a great job just introducing us to everyone. I wore your pin, FFA, so you know it's on YouTube now. And it was just a great time. It was a great time to go back to Orange High and to be escorted around and see all the wonderful things going on there. I'll end with, I was going to end with what Dr. Vane mentioned, which is the Richland graduation. I was so happy to join her with that. But I want to end with the outdoor ed program. At Palmyra, they're out there right now at Running Springs with their science camp. I want to shout out not only to our principal, Blooderman, but also to our teachers, Ms. Campbell, excuse me, Ms. L. Campbell, and also Ms. Ellis, who's out there with the sixth graders right now. Please don't send Elijah home. He's a good boy. Got a phone call this afternoon. Anyway, but seriously, don't send him home, Lord Jesus. But I just want to thank everyone for all you guys are doing at all the different schools. You're really making Orange a place that's destination-oriented. We want our students to come here and to stay here, and so with us going out, being more knowledgeable on the programs, and having people let us know what their issues are so we can try to resolve them, it will continue to be a destination district. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Thomas, one more thing.
I am so sorry. Thank you, trustee Bane, for the reminder. I also attended the VAPA the first night. We have the most amazing musicians in this district, and all I have to say is, journey, don't stop believing. I still continue to listen to it, like, on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I can vouch for Stella's brownies. They were good, and they did ruin my diet, but that's all right. So anyway, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Thank you to staff. I echo everybody's love for all of y'all, because everything that you do means something to our students and our families and our parents, and we're all very proud to be part of this district. So thank you for all that you do, and thank you to my fellow board members, as usual, for being so professional and wonderful. So this meeting is adjourned at 10:05.